All right, we're ready to begin. Call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty-five in the evening. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
Ryan, what do we have for closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council recessed to closed session for the two items listed on the agenda, Conference of Legal Council, items three A and three B.
All right, any recusals or conflicts?
No.
No public comments because there's no one in the gallery, and we're going to recess to closed session. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four at seven oh four in the afternoon. Call to order, and now we'll have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
We had a closed session before this meeting, and there are no reportable actions. This evening, we'll have the invocation. I will be providing that, and that'll be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and that'll be given by Jim DiLalanga, Director of Economic Development, so please stand with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to give you thanks. We're so grateful for the chance to be in part of our city. We're especially mindful of this week of thankfulness, and all of us are in awe of all the great things you've given us throughout our lives. Be with us as we deliberate the items in front of us. Give us the wisdom to do what's best for our city. In his name we pray, amen.
Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'll start with our evening announcements, and this is kind of a cool thing, and you're kind of aware of it already, but I'll highlight it a little bit. Six oh five All-Star Band, representing five hundred and fifty students from Artesia, Bellflower, Saritos, Gar, John Glenn, La Marada, Mayfair, and Norwalk High Schools. Let me do that again. That's Artesia High, Bellflower High, Saritos, Gar High, John Glenn High, La Marada High, Mayfair, and Norwalk High. They've been selected by the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Association to march in the one hundred and thirty-sixth Rose Parade on January first, two thousand twenty-five. This Sunday, December first, the six oh five All-Star Band will be conducting a practice march starting at Bellflower High School at one thirty, and it will end at Mayfair Park in Lakewood around four thirty. Alondra Boulevard and Ron Yerry Way will be closed to vehicle traffic from McNabb Street to Woodruff Avenue from one o'clock to two o'clock, and Woodruff Avenue will be closed to vehicular traffic from Alondra Boulevard to Rose Street. Closures are expected to take less than one hour and will take place in three segments. For more information on the parade or the closure, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two five nine, or you can visit our website at www.bellflower.org. So let me repeat. Woodruff Avenue, starting at Alondra and going to the city limits, will be blocked off that afternoon, and it will be a roving deal where about an hour worth of time for the parade to proceed, and they'll be practicing their work so they get it perfect on January first. It's pretty exciting stuff. It's going to conclude in Lakewood at Mayfair Park, and if you want to see it, just make sure you're along the curb, along Woodruff or along Alondra, and you'll get to see five hundred and fifty musicians do their best to represent our cities. Mayor Protem Wade Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony is scheduled to take place next Friday, December sixth at six thirty PM in downtown Bellflower. And that'll be located near Friendship Square, where the big Christmas tree will be lit. Local residents and neighboring communities are invited to this free event. It's going to be filled with carolers, crafts, and real snow sledding. Santa Claus will make a special appearance and meet with children to take a photo and listen to their holiday wishes. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, and that would be extension twenty-two sixty-one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is working closely with residents, community groups, schools, service clubs, and organizations to provide Christmas food boxes and/or gift cards to families in need. Gift cards, monetary donations, canned goods, and gifts for children can be donated and will need to be received by next Monday, December second. For more details, please call five six two eight zero four one four two four, extension two three three one, or email mhardy@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city is considering establishing an art district along Clark Avenue and wants to hear from our residents and business owners. An art district is a designated area intended to foster and support the arts culture within a community. To provide your input, please complete a survey on the city's website, which can be found at www.bellflower.org art survey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzianez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to its next monthly mingle, which is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, from nine AM to ten AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. We'll see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzianez. So at this time, we're going to be offered a Town Center Plaza presentation by our Economic Director of Development, Jim DiLalanga. Jim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. I'm going to throw you a little curveball here today. We're using something a little bit different than our typical PowerPoint presentation, and so I'll get started. Town Center Plaza was completed around ten years ago, and with the recent relocation of the farmer's market to this site, it became evident that the plaza was showing its age and hasn't been working as a downtown draw and activity space. The plaza could use some improvements to increase its usability for daily activities over and above the weekly farmer's market and other intermittent events while still keeping it available for special larger events. Oops, I went the wrong way. See, I went the wrong way, guys. See, here's the glitch with using something new. So let me get back to the where I need to be here. Okay, let's see if it works now. Nope, still. We're going to go back real fast, so don't look at the screen. You'll get sick. And we'll get there, almost there, almost there. Thanks for bearing with me. Background, here we are. For those that were not around or who need a refresher, these photos provide a glimpse into that area prior to the plaza being built. This is a tremendous example of how far the downtown has come in the past twenty-five years. Almost unrecognizable. So now let's take a look at Town Center Plaza, the phase one of the plaza. This is the conceptual drawing of the plaza back in the early two thousands before it was built, and this is how the original conceptual design translated into the real thing after completion in two thousand four. So you can see a lot of the vegetation hasn't been fully matured at that point. Here are a couple photos taken from Aiden Moore Avenue showing what it looks like today. And here's a couple comparison photos of before and after, pre-plaza and current plaza from two different vantage points. This one here is looking southwest. This one's looking northwest. From there, let's take a look at events and activities that have taken place on the plaza. So far, so good. Everything's going in order. National Day of Prayer event is held in the plaza annually, and the Art Fest event was held there for one year as we were coming out of the pandemic. Food trucks and flicks was a regular event at the plaza during pre-COVID summers, alternating with Street Fest. This past summer, though, Parks and Rec changed things up a bit and did a successful rooftop movie night on the parking structure, and Street Fest events were held consecutively. Of course, there's the farmer's market weekly on Mondays from three PM to seven PM, rain or shine. And the Chamber of Commerce utilizes the plaza each year around Halloween for a small festival and the termination of their trick-or-treat on the boulevard event. For the past two years, the Stand Up Comedy Club has utilized the plaza for Comedy Fest LA, an outdoor full-day comedy festival. And finally, staff from a couple of departments, as well as staff from Congressman Garcia's office, have used the plaza for outreach activities during the farmer's market. So with that, let's take a look at the two project conceptual designs that staff has been working on. These are, I want you to keep in mind, these are conceptual, and they're not final, so let's take a look at those. So we worked with a company called Studio Pad Landscape Architecture to come up with two conceptual designs. The original draft designs were routed to Public Works and Parks and Recreation staff for feedback. That feedback was included in the designs we are presenting, and there are some common design features between the designs and the common goals with the plaza conceptual designs are to refresh and update. We want to drive more activity and visitors to the downtown. We want to provide shade and relief from the sun and heat, especially in the summer. We'd like it to be flexible space, wanted to add features without constraining the uses of the plaza. We want to eliminate the difficult-to-maintain water features, consider maintenance, upkeep, and safety factors, and that includes the landscaping, trees, and hardscape maintenance, fixed-in-place furnishings, potential storage, and a public restroom. And it is important to remember that maintenance will always be needed, and the better something is made, and the more we put into it and the bigger impact it has, the more maintenance that is needed over time to keep it at that level. We also want to do a stage redesign to facilitate its use, and we want to consider the surrounding uses. So conceptual Plan A is an events-driven design and is essentially a refresh of the existing plaza design and adds a few features and amenities it doesn't currently have. It includes an expanded lawn area of about four thousand nine hundred square feet, the addition of shade trees in the interior of the plaza, as well as on the parking lot and street edges, and a rectangular one thousand two hundred square foot stage. Examples here on the sidebar show the design features that are included on the design, and these include overhead shade structures, palm and ground plantings, as well as decorative benches and colorful picnic tables. You can kind of see that in the design in the pink and purple, the red, and then, let me see, use the pointer here. There we go. There's benches and game tables here. There's the benches, and here's some more picnic tables and so forth on the design. These other sidebar items, primarily the benches and large pots, are also placed throughout the plaza. The decorative laser-cut panels are located at the bottom or south portion of the plaza and provide a bit of a boundary between the pedestrian walking area next to the buildings and the park area to the north. So you can kind of see that piece is right across the bottom there, so that these are the buildings, like the comedy club and the Dutch store and so forth, and that gives a little separation between that and the park. On this slide, the blue boxes show where the farmer's market stalls can be accommodated in this design. Should the market expand in the future, additional merchant stalls could be added to the lawn area in the center. Conceptual Plan B is a daily use-driven design. It includes an expanded lawn area of around five thousand eight hundred square feet that has been divided into quadrants with paths, the addition of more shade trees and palms in the interior and perimeter of the plaza, and a rectangular one thousand one hundred and twenty square foot stage. Many of the amenities in the sidebar of this design are the same as the previous design. However, umbrellas, plantings, and large potted plants have been used with pavers or colored concrete to create outdoor seating rooms. Additional seating has also been placed around the outside of the lawn area that opens up to the stage. So these are the, kind of like the seating rooms that are discussed. You can see the tables here and Adirondack chairs and stuff on the outside here that would then face the stage that would be up here. The rectangular stage is framed by palms and includes areas for a possible cabana, kiosk, bathroom, or storage shed on the sides. So these red structures here could be any number of those things that we discussed, and depending on how big you make the stage, you can make more room for those types of things. Finally, a small children's play area has been added on the west side of the plaza, and a potential food vendor or additional small play area has been added on the east side of the plaza adjacent to Aiden Moore Avenue. On this side, the blue box shows where the farmer's market stalls can be accommodated in this particular design. Should the market expand in the future, additional merchant stalls could be added to the area in front of the stage. Now that pretty much concludes my presentation. Wanted to give you an overview of what we've been working on in this regard, and move on to the next thing. Any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Keep going.
We should be clear on this item because this is a presentation item. We can't take direction from you this evening, but if you have questions about where we're going with this or conceptual projects, Jim can answer those for you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
So I think this, first of all, I like the conceptual project that you're bringing to us. I'm not going to say which one I prefer over the other, but, because I heard the comments. But this kind of reminds me of like the exchange, at the LB Exchange over at, in Long Beach, where, you know, there's some food vendoring around, and then there's like a congregation area where kids can run around and play and, you know, just good area for family activity, right? With that said, on the exchange project in Long Beach, there are certain amenities that kind of go with the, all the restaurants, right, that you can either buy your, from the food court, and then you walk over here and hang out in this area. Would that kind of be the same here with regards to the consumption of food, beverages, you know, and ice cream and stuff of that nature? What's your vision with that, if there's any?
Depending on which way this ends up being, you know, the idea is that it's a meeting place, and one of the things I mentioned earlier in the presentation is that, other than the farmer's market and some of these annual intermittent uses that we have there, the plaza is kind of dead. You know, there's not a lot of activity there. And so this is an opportunity to probably bring some more of that activity and make it a place where maybe if you don't want to sit at Steel Craft, you could buy your food at Steel Craft and come sit out at Town Center Plaza, something of that nature.
Perfect. All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So another thing, you know, if this is something that you guys are interested in, we can bring this back for a more robust discussion at a later council meeting, so that is also an option.
At that point, we can also have some info from our Parks and Recreation team. Unfortunately, PJ wasn't able to be here this evening. He has a family emergency, but we can have a coordinated presentation from Jim and our Parks and Rec team if you want to have further discussion on this project.
One question I would have, and you dealt with it a little bit, was it does not get the use of the area as, on a daily basis, but the big event, like the gentleman that puts on the Comedy Fest, both of those conceptions would probably prohibit him from having his larger audience, don't you think? Or am I reading this wrong?
I think the first option would probably allow for that. It might be a little trickier for them to plan it, but with the additional furnishings that might be installed in the park, the second option, if something was to go down that route, could make that a lot more difficult for a large event such as that.
And when we consider the other uses, this is not an area we rent out. This is kind of, it takes on the, on the identity of a park more than anything, is what I'm picturing.
It does. It could be, it's not something that has been done a lot, like on a rent-out basis, but the comedy thing is one of those things that is similar to having it rented out for a large event. So it could have that, but we just don't do it that often.
And I don't want to give the impression we're competing with Steel Craft because there's that element too, that you buy your food and eat it in an open area. The expectation of having people buy food at Steel Craft, walk across the parking lot, and sit there to eat it, it's a good thought, but I think they just soon eat right where they're, they got their food rather than walk a hundred yards to find another place to eat it, but that's just what I'm thinking out loud.
Things to consider.
And the, I always thought the element of having the hot trucks there, the food trucks, when we did have an event, always blended itself in, but there would be no place for that to occur anymore.
Well, interesting that you bring that up because staff, Parks and Rec staff and Economic Development have been talking about, and I think even Public Works, installing retractable bollards at Aiden Moore Avenue and even in a portion of the parking lot on the west side of the park to, which would essentially make the plaza larger because you would be able to stop traffic there, and you utilize the street for plaza activities. So that's, that's not shown anywhere in the conceptuals because it's not the plaza proper, but that is something, a concept that we've been tossing around internally.
You know, as we approach the time of year when we have our Christmas tree lighting, and you know Parks and Rec and Len would explain how for many years, our great Christmas tree has been on hospice, for lack of a better term, and we keep it up there, but it's always like, how many more years will it endure? Would we ever want to consider having a similar tree in this area and host our Christmas tree lighting in this plaza? Should there be an area, I'm not saying that's the way to go, but we could accommodate a lot of people in that, the area you're describing in, and the parking lots adjacent to it. But I wanted you to be aware of, if you're not already, that that tree is suspect. For how many more years can it go? And not to say we couldn't put another tree back in there, but it wouldn't hurt to possibly use part of your graphics here to put some sort of a Christmas tree-looking, garden-looking item, so. Just looking ahead of the potentials, you know. While I'm asking questions, have I developed any questions you'd like to ask before we continue? Mrs. Sunny, Sanzianez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim, for your presentation. I can, I can tell that you spent a lot of time preparing for this project. First of all, I kind of, I'm a firm believer of form follows function. I think what we need to discuss first is what do we want to see in the Town Center Plaza? Because as you mentioned, for the last few years, just being polite here, it was hardly used as a plaza. You mentioned that we have the Comedy Fest, and then the Art Fest was done there in two thousand nineteen. I know that in twenty twenty-four, or two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty-two, it was moved to Sims Park. And I understand from staff that it was a kind of logistical issue, kind of putting up tents at the plaza. So that's one thing we need to kind of address first, what do we want to see in the plaza before we start reimagining what's going to go in the plaza. So another example is the stage. If we renovate the stage, that's going to cost a lot of money. But are we envisioning bringing some kind of entertainment, like a band, things like that? Then we need to kind of be mindful that are we competing with Steel Craft, especially on weekends? Because my understanding is on, especially Thursday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they have entertainment, sometimes live band at Steel Craft. So those are things we need to consider. I think for me, the most usage of Town Center Plaza at this time is the farmer's market. It's being used once a week, but other than that, it was sporadically used. And I understand we're going to, if we decide to go this path, we'll be investing a significant amount of money, and I want to be mindful of that in terms of to get the biggest bang for the bucks we're going to be investing. My other thought here is between one, between option one and two, is there a kind of flexibility to make it accommodate both? So that if we're not using it for a day-to-day activities, it can be used for a big event? Because I don't want to constrain ourselves for one use only, and then have a logistical nightmare to switch from A to B.
Well, it was, these are conceptual, very conceptual, and there's nothing final in these, so mix and match, and, you know, it's all, it's all open for discussion at a later date.
Look into that if it's feasible to do that. And also to my colleagues here, I think we need to address the bigger issue, what do we want to see in the Town Center Plaza? Because I don't want to be investing a lot of money if the use will be similar to what we have now. We need to kind of think, are we committing resources, let's say, for Parks and Rec to have some kind of programming? Do we invite back the Bellflower Symphony to do a performance at the Town Center Plaza? Do we bring one or two movie nights? I love the movie night atop the parking structure, but do we bring back one or two movie nights during the summer, Town Center Plaza, Carruthers Park, Sims? These are kind of the bigger questions. So what I want to address first is what do we want to use the Town Center Plaza for? And we can address the issue in terms of design A, B, or C, whatever it is, once we decide on the usage of that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I just want to challenge that question. I don't think the idea, I don't think it competes with Steel Craft or Calaveras or any of the restaurants in the downtown. I think it's an added amenity where you, where you go and buy your stuff, and then you go and hang out in that area, in that open space. Again, I'm not saying that we need to do this. I don't know if this is a priority anyways, but I don't, we do, the people that go to the Exchange Club, which I think would be a good tour for us to do, you walk a hundred, a hundred and fifty, you know, yards, two hundred yards, to go get your food and then go to the open space and let the kids run around and, you know, all that stuff. So I wouldn't worry about that, and it doesn't compete. As long as we don't put food vendors there, it won't compete. It'll just be an added amenity. Because I mean, it's a way more open space. Like right now, Steel Craft has that little section where the kids can run around. You get three, four kids, five kids in there, and there's not enough space for them anymore. So I just want to challenge that a little bit respectfully. But I do agree with Councilmember Sunny Sanzianez, which is what is it that we want to do? What's the real vision? If we are going to invest this much money, then does it include a schedule with BRIM? Does it include a schedule with the movie nights, you know, consistently and other activities there on a regular basis? I would, I would support that idea, or I support that idea of that conversation in general. That's it. Thank you.
Competition, I kind of mentioned that because one of the issues with the Street Fest, for example, is when we bring, when we bring food trucks, the merchants on the boulevard complain about it.
I understand.
They are sending, I'm sure you have similar complaint. So I just want to be mindful of that. So I really want to have a grand visioning of what we want in the Town Center Plaza to make sure that it's going to be happy medium to everyone.
Yeah, I think when the food trucks are supposed to establish a lower price point, I think that's only in the convenience. Morse?
I do not have anything.
How about you, Mr. Dutton?
Of course. We all know that this, this area is dated, and it's glad to see staff bring it forward and whatever. And this conceptual project is doing exactly what it was designed for. It's getting us to talk about it. And we haven't talked about it before as a body until now, we get a presentation. So now you can see So now, you can see all these minds, our constituents, us, now we have something to talk about, we've got a foundation of what really needs. And I do agree, what is the use for this, and then build it to accommodate that, once that's decided. Great job, great presentation, and great thought that the town center is getting a little dated. Thank you.
So I'll open up to the public. You've heard what we're thinking about, and the chambers here, and some other constituents that have interest in what we're doing. Does anybody else want to offer their viewpoint on what we've just seen? Maybe we can learn something that we're not seeing? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I wanted to throw another thing, a nugget out there, I forgot to add it to the presentation. About 18 months ago, when we first started the farmer's market there, we were looking at a grant from Caltrans to update the plaza. Turns out, we, the site didn't qualify for that grant, so we weren't able to go through with it, but we had gotten pretty far down the path. And down that path, one of the requirements was to get public input for the grant. So we did hard copy and digital surveys for the grant, and we ended up getting like 140 responses to that. And a lot of the responses were incorporated into these conceptuals, the bulk of those were, you know, it's hot in that plaza in the summertime, and so shade was an issue. More street furniture and types of things of that nature, water fountains, you know, conveniences of those types. So a lot of the things that you saw in those conceptuals were part and parcel from the survey responses, along with staff ideas.
What I did see, that you wanted to eliminate the water feature, which I think is an important aspect, because it's not, no longer used, and I've learned over the years from Len, the maintenance is pretty intensive for water features. Anything else that you'd like to present on this part, or you got a second part, or what else you got?
Nope, this will be it. We'll come back at a later date for a more robust discussion with you guys, and we can get a little down into the nuts and bolts.
If you, you know, PJ's not here, and he'll be back, of course, but I think if you were to talk with him about some of the things that he can envision throughout the year, and also, Sunny brought up a good point, there's no reason why the symphony could, if they can have a symphony concert in the park, this would certainly be a better venue than that. You know, they've got a stage there, and you put up your lawn chair, and it's centrally located in the city. I think some of our musical aspects of the city could be presented, that we got the chorus, we got the symphony, and how often would they use it? Once, twice a year? But introduce some of the things, like Sunny said, that would allow us to investigate what it is it's best being used for, so it's just not used on the weekends or on Monday for the farmer's market, but has more, two or three other uses during the week, so we have more use for it. But that would be my only contribution to that. All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation, and you can see that we're all interested in what you're doing. So we'll move on to public comments. Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
So here's your chance, if you have anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda. We're here to listen to you and help you. Is there anyone present that'd like to come forward at this time? Hi, Ms. Palacios. Sign in and tell us what, how you're doing. I can always remember your name, because it's the same as my first grade teacher in 1956, so.
Really?
I go back a long way with Ms. Palacios, so.
I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving to the mayor and all the council members. I'm here yet again, saddened. I heard a rumor, I believe it's true, several people have told me. I live by assisted living, and apparently on November 17th, we had another disabled man hit in the crosswalk. You know, we appreciate the flashing yellow lights. This man was meticulous about pressing the yellow flashing lights button. He was one of the safest persons, and he got around very well in his wheelchair, more than most. So anyway, the rumor is, he got hit on Saturday at about 10:00 PM, and he's injured, and he's somewhere. We haven't seen him since, so we don't know how he is. And we have no info on him, but, you know, I believe the situation is, since I'm a lot on that corner, trying to help them, people are slowing down when they see the lights. And the last man that was killed on September 4th, two years ago, it's the same thing. The, you know, somebody stops, and the cars just hit the pedal to the metal and go around the car. That's what happened on September 4th. So I know we have two traffic lights on both sides, this block, that block, but we still have an issue with reckless drivers, and people getting injured on the corner, and people trying to dodge cars. And disabled people are a category of people where they have a harder time dodging cars. I know. I got hit by an SUV. I've been denied medical for nine years by my employment. I was hit at work. It's a sad situation.
No, and we're doing our best to make that as safe as possible. And if you're saying, he was out there at 10 o'clock at night, that would probably lend itself to the time of day that traffic is probably more intense.
It's usually less intense. We're getting towards the holidays. I've informed all my neighbors that this holiday, because we're like the mall to here, people are racing to the mall after work and racing back home. I've lived there 22, 23 years. It's always the case during this season that, you know, people are shopping, they're racing to the mall and back. And this is the street they race down.
You know, it's a busy street.
But I can remember, I do domestic violence, and this young girl was, she got molested, et cetera, because she went out after midnight, crawled out the window, and she, something bad happened. And they said, well, it was her fault, because she went out the window, to which my colleagues, my colleagues in domestic violence told me, Darlene, just because somebody goes outside, that doesn't give anybody the right to injure them, run them down, or whatever. So that was my professional wisdom from my colleagues. Just because it's 10 o'clock at night, nobody should be hit at 10 o'clock at night, at 10:00 AM.
No, I understand that.
24/7, nobody has the, you know, it's not their fault that they got hit, and I'm sure he was as safe as could be. I always know him as the safest. He would have been the last person on earth, I thought, would have gotten hit, because the other people, they shuffle, some of them, et cetera. So anyway, we still have a reckless driving issue. Maybe we can get the sheriffs to help us slow things down.
All right, we'll check it out. Your time's up, I appreciate your testimony. Anybody else have anything they'd like to offer? Good evening, what's your name?
Good evening, my name is John Milkie, and I'm from Troop 371 in Bellflower.
Hey, can you sign our register there?
Yeah. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is John Milkie. I was born in Bellflower, and I go to school in Bellflower. I've been going to St. Dominic's Savio Church since kinder, and I graduated from St. Dominic's Savio School. I started Cub Scouts in first grade, and currently I'm a Boy Scout in Troop 371. I also play the drums for 430 Mass at St. Dominic's Savio Parish. And my passion as a student from St. John Bosco High School is in music. I am the drum line captain and center snare in St. John Bosco Marching Band, and I'm a percussionist and drummer for Jazz Band. So who is this Eagle Scout project benefiting and impacting at Bosco? Well, we have a film and media pathway, several musical art classes, such as hip-hop, pop, beginning band, and intermediate band, music production, media production, and animation. We have all these classes and groups, and we don't have a recording room. The jazz combo I'm in, Combo Six, all love to play music and perform. Realizing the necessity of a studio room, I started this studio club, which already has over 40 members that share the wish for a recording studio. We have the equipment, but we don't have a room to put it in, to make sound production possible. I'm going to make this my Eagle Scout project. I'm going to repurpose an existing room and combine it with a newly constructed room, a fairly simple process, including the demolition of a non-bearing wall and the partition of a new wall, to create a fully functional recording studio and tech control room. My vision is that students will have the opportunity to professionally record, edit, and produce their own sound, whether it is through music, media, or sound effects, thus supporting multiple campus ministries. We are planning to apply for this permit tomorrow, with an architect who is drawing up the plans, and since this is a volunteer project, we are trying to keep funds low. So I kindly ask for your consideration to waive permit fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
My name is Mac McLeod, here representing Young's Tackle, right here in the city of Bellflower.
A fisherman, I take it.
Probably six, eight months ago, we had ground opening over Young's Tackle, I think, majority of you here, Mr. Mayor, council.
We were there.
That was fun. Anyways, Kevin, the owner, right here, stand up, Kevin. Great job. Anyways, he's had the shop now for about two years. He loves it. He's doing very well. He has told me recently that they're going to be opening up a couple parking for the public in the back of his shop there. Of course, it's our front entrance. It's going to be all-day parking. What we're asking for is to put two-hour parking on probably 50% to 80% of those parking spots.
You don't need to stay anymore, because that's an agenda item for tonight.
So everything's, everything's good?
Well, it's, I would, we're not taking testimony on that. You can certainly stay until we do that part of the agenda.
Okay.
And offer your testimony, but at this point in time, it's not the appropriate time to bring it forward.
Okay, I didn't know. It's the first time I've been to a meeting.
No, and we're glad you're here.
You're doing good.
No, no, patience is virtue here.
Anyway, say, Kevin, and the shop would like to invite all of you over. Fairly new shop, it's a fishing store, tackle. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a good rehearsal.
Good rehearsal, but don't go away, because we're discussing the parking lot you're talking about.
Okay, so you know.
Right. Have you ever seen this guy in there, this gentleman here, Len Garecki? He likes to fish.
I'm there part-time, so I'm there just to tell fish stories.
Well, he's there full-time, so that's even.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Next item, so it won't be long. And Kevin, hang with us, we'll be good, okay? Anybody else have anything they would like to discuss or bring forward? We'll move on to the next part of the meeting as soon as Mr. Smoot returns. He's offering some explanation to the Eagle Scout there. Sunny's church. All right, Mr. Smoot, we're going to let you introduce 13A, which is the parking item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is going to be the Brian show, so Mr. McNerney's going to take this one on.
Well, I wanted him to have the proper intro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you know.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this evening I'll be seeking your approval of Resolution 2460.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Mayor, I believe we have some conflicts on this particular item.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Yep. Like all of us?
We got a five forgot.
We were so excited about the fishermen here that... All right, so what you have before, Mr.?
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself of item 3A for a property conflict within 1,000 feet.
I also need to recuse myself on item 13A for a property conflict within 500 feet.
And I think I'm in the same situation. We all have property adjoining parking lots, and so we need to draw straws as to who will remain and run this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are prepared to draw lots. Here are the names of the conflicted council members. Mr. Mayor Pretend Dunn, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's spelled correctly.
Does that mean he wins or loses?
We still need to draw.
Oh, okay. I thought that he already drew.
Here is Mayor Coops.
Yes, that's it.
And last but not least, Councilmember Morris.
Yep, there we are. Wendy's there. M-O-R-R-I-S?
So now we'll draw to see who will participate. Do you want to draw?
Close your eyes.
Councilmember Morris will participate in the matter.
All right.
Okay. So Mr. Dutton and I are out of here, and you can elect someone to, and that would be Sunny? Sit in the big chair.
Okay.
Figure it out for yourself. You can draw lots for that.
All right. Item 13A, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Councilmember Santaniz. Mr. McNerney, it's all yours.
Good evening, members of the City Council. This evening I'll be seeking your approval of Resolution 2460, which modifies parking restrictions at various city-owned or controlled parking lots throughout the city, pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code Chapter 10.12, and superseding Resolution Number 2163. Parking restrictions and parking enforcement in downtown Bellflower have received its fair share of complaints and requests for modification in recent years. Inconsistent parking rules and inconsistent enforcement of these rules have been a main area of confusion. At the October 14th City Council meeting, possible changes to various city-owned and controlled parking lots were presented to address these concerns. Feedback was provided, and modifications have now been incorporated into Resolution Number 2460. The first modification taking place is to adjust the two-hour parking restrictions for lots number one, number two, and number three, as depicted on the map, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, except Sundays, to 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM, except Sundays. These three lots are the most heavily impacted in the downtown area. Consistent with the parking survey study, which revealed peak parking times to be after 8:00 PM, the adjustment of time restrictions to the afternoon and evening hours will provide unrestricted parking during non-peak hours, and will focus enforcement efforts during high-usage times. This modification would also make all three lots consistent in their restrictions. The second modification being made is no overnight parking in the parking structure between midnight and 6:00 AM daily. As discussed previously, the parking structure currently has no parking restrictions located within it. The lack of restrictions is causing loitering issues, vandalism issues, and stolen vehicle issues. Prohibiting the parking of vehicles overnight will reduce negative activity occurrences and ensure the parking structure is being used for legitimate purposes. The third and final modification being made is opening 29 parking spaces with no time restrictions in Lot 17. Those will be the two yellow highlighted areas. In addition to these parking spaces, there are an additional 21 parking spaces, which will remain as two-hour parking from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Sunday, which will be the red boxed area at the bottom of the screen. Based on observations by staff, the existing two-hour parking area is sufficient to accommodate turnover customer parking for the businesses in the immediate area when it is actively enforced. That's the key there, when it is actively enforced. That's the key there, when it is actively enforced. Should the recommended modifications be made, there will be an extensive warning and notification process. Downtown businesses will be provided with an overview of the new parking restrictions and what lots will be affected. Our city website will be updated to include the changes, and warning flyers will be distributed to vehicles parking in the affected lots. And this is fairly standard operation, what we do whenever we have significant changes, um, in any of our parking rules. We always follow through with a very robust, uh, warning process. We don't wanna catch anyone off guard with when there's new rules being put in place. To ensure time-based parking restrictions are enforced on a consistent, proactive basis, additional staffing will be, will need to be hired. Originally, at the October fourteenth council meeting, a full-time position was being pursued. However, after researching various technology devices which can be used to streamline work performance, additional funding for only part-time staff is being requested. The addition of more part-time staff in conjunction with the use of technology will allow for more consistent and proactive enforcement of parking restrictions. An additional twenty thousand dollars is being requested to increase the allocation for part-time staff wages. Also, at the October fourteen council meeting, direction was provided to seek out tech, seek out technology options to better assist in the enforcement of time-regulation parking areas. Our research found that there are technological devices which can be used to assist our efforts. One such system is provided by our current citation processing company, Turbo Data. The requested budget amendment of eighty thousand dollars will be used to purchase this, this technology to streamline our enforcement efforts. A typical system consists of multiple plate-reading cameras, a centralized processing unit, a tablet or laptop to view the data, associate software, a SIM card, and there are some monthly, uh, charges for the software and the SIM card, uh, devices themselves. And just to briefly describe what that technology looks like a, as far as being practically applied in the field, I believe at the last meeting I discussed that it usually takes anywhere between forty-five minutes to an hour for, uh, our current staff to walk a lot and manually chalk these vehicles. If we're talking a lot full of close to a hundred vehicles, it would take roughly about that amount of time. Um, there's a lot of, oftentimes people will see us out there thinking we're giving citations, come running out to us, when in fact we're just chalking cars, which causes a lot of conversation to happen, which delays us out there. So you're looking at doing it right now by on foot, forty minutes to an hour for, for one lot, um, one of the larger lots. Using this technology, you would streamline that to probably about forty-five seconds. And wha- this technology, what it does is you have license plate reading cameras on the, on a patrol vehicle, one of our own vehicles, and you would simply drive into the lot. It would capture the, the, uh, photograph of every single plate in that lot. It would geocode it with a, like a GPS coordinate. You then leave, you then come back once the two-hour timeframe has expired. You simply run through the lot once again, and anything that matches, uh, the photographs match with a GPS hit, it'll flag that for you, and you can automatically issue a citation from there. So it would take you, again, forty minutes to an hour to walk the lot and manually chalk it versus forty-five seconds to a minute to drive through the lot and do the exact same thing. So it's a drastic improvement of staff time, uh, with the enforcement options. Uh, so with that, uh, the recommendation tonight is to adopt Resolution number twenty-four sixty um, and approve a budget amendment in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for account zero-one-zero-four-zero-three-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero to hire additional part-time communities, uh, community service officers, and approve a budget amendment in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for account zero-one-zero-four-seven-five-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero to purchase license plate reading technology for time parking enforcement, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And with that, that'll conclude my presentation, and I am more than happy to answer any questions should there be any.
Thank you so much, Mr. McNerney, for your very comprehensive presentation. Seems like you did a lot of your homework for this, uh, for this evening's meeting. Uh, my first question is, um, on lots, um, three, one, and two, will there be, um, overnight parking allowed?
So currently, uh, there is overnight parking allowed, ex- with the exception of every Wednesday, between midnight and six AM, uh, for lot sweeping. That's the only time we prohibit overnight parking. But, so six days out of the week, you would be allowed to park overnight in those lots, yes, currently.
Except Wednesdays.
Except for Wednesdays.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then, um, I, I like your suggest, your recommendation on the parking structure. It's very timely because, um, I walk there at least once a week, and I see a lot of issues, and I think that's well, well-needed. On Lot seventeen, if you can show Lot seventeen, okay. A- as I mentioned, my, uh, my concern here is if we allow unrestricted parking in the yellow designated areas, that will basically reduce the amount of parking available, uh, to the merchants, to the customers in that area. And, um, although you mentioned that, based on your study, uh, you mentioned that, um, you said that, um, the red, um, area is sufficient if enforcement is, um, followed. One of my concerns here is if we open up those spaces, the yellow space, again, as no re- no restriction, the first thing that comes to mind is, um, the employees at the post office. We'll be parking there again, because it's gonna be open to anyone, and that will reduce the number of parking space available. I happened to kind of, uh, drove that area twice last week, and those yellow areas and the red areas were full at about ten AM. They were full on two consecutive days. I intentionally drove there. I think it was Wednesday and Thursday last week. It was full. So if we, if we follow the recommendation, your recommendation to allow those unrestricted parking, I think we're gonna be be, uh, going back to the same issue. Keep in mind that, um, even before your time, when Mr. Hockman was still the Director of Public Safety, I've been getting complaints from merchants, uh, especially, uh, the fish tackle shop, because there's no parking available for the customers, because we are not enforcing, uh, the parking on the, the red, um, identified areas. And once parking has been enforced, uh, I think it kind of alleviated the situation. But going back to the history before that, before the city acquired, um, the, um, the, the property on, the empowered property on, uh, Flower and, um, and Belfar Boulevard, the only public parking available was the red designated area, and that was an issue. So my concern is if we allow the yellow designated areas to be unrestricted parking, and we have a problem later on, then it's gonna be very difficult to take it back. Because once you give something, it's hard to take it back, okay? And I, I think, um, my, again, my concern there is gonna be going back to the same issue, all right? Um, and then my next question is, if we approve this resolution tonight, when is gonna be the effective date?
I don't have a hard date for you. Um, if we were, if everything were to be approved tonight, even if there were modifications made, um, it would probably take us a number of weeks to get warning notices out, letters out to the businesses. So hypothetically, I like, uh, it's, it's easier and cleaner for us to start like the first of a month. So we have enough time to probably even start this January two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and that will give us enough time to order the signs and things like that. Uh, and also, I like your suggestion, your recommendation about technology. I'm all for it. My only, uh, hesitancy there is the cost. It's eighty thousand. Is that the best we can do?
So, uh, three different organizations were contacted. Now, I'll admit, the, the request of eighty thousand is on the higher end to ensure that we can cover the cost. Uh, but based on the three organizations I spoke to, the average cost was somewhere around seventy, sixty-five to seventy thousand, uh, for a complete system. Um, and one company was on the lower end. However, uh, and this company was T-two Solutions. They do not sell standalone systems. We would had to have dumped our current citation provider and gone with them for a full-house, complete system, everything, which would've been a much more substantial cost.
Okay, so we, we employ the same technology for, or similar technology for the, um, the sheriff's car, right?
Uh, it's, it's somewhat similar, yes. Some components are similar, yes.
Okay, and how much does this cost us to, to deploy those, um?
Currently, right now, uh, if we're looking at the, the license plate reader cameras on our sheriff patrol vehicles, all we're paying for right now is the airtime, the data time for those, uh, vehicles and those cameras. We recently just got the license plate reader, the fixed-mount cameras on the intersection, uh, poles, and those are averaging about ten to fifteen thousand dollars per camera. So in this system that we're looking at, it would, the car we would have, would have three cameras.
But in the car, how much will it cost us?
The car?
Yeah.
Well, right now, the only cost we're paying for the cars, for the sheriff cars, are for the airtime, the, the, the actual data connection.
So there's no fixed amount?
No.
Oh, okay.
The sheriff's department sets a fixed contract rate, but what Brian's referring to is that contract rate that we're paying is the airtime cost for the service.
Right, because I'm trying to kind of compare apples to apples here. Because to me, it seems like the eighty thousand is, with technology these days, very inexpensive, the cameras and the laptop.
We also, w- with this proposal, we're paying for software. With the sheriff ones, we're not paying for any of that. Uh, with the sheriff ones, we're simply paying for the hardware and the airtime. Software's all handled by the sheriff's department, which we pay no cost for that.
Yeah, because if we were to acquire this technology, we need to be very careful with that vehicle. We cannot afford to wear that vehicle to have an accident. All right, and then, um, your recommendation went part-time. I understand that, um, it will take us resources to implement this. But what I'm getting at here is, um, if we receive the, um, if we present a report to the city council from the consultant that we, that we hired, who was a consultant that, um, what's his name, um?
Phil.
Phil.
Uh, Brian's presented that to the Public Safety Commission and got feedback from them. He's, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, January we're planning that for the council?
Correct, January.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at here is we are recommending a part-time position here, and then although it's not yet, um, subject to this discussion, recommending another position for SEYACA or Animal Control. I'm just kind of hesitant to do a piecemeal addition of staff. Uh, what I'd like to propose is to wait for the study, for the presentation, so we can look at this staffing on a more holistic approach, instead of piecemeal here, piecemeal there. Although we can start doing this already if the rest of the council agrees, we can implement the other aspect of the spec- except for the part-time position, which again, I'd like to, to study in a more comprehensive manner, uh, the whole department. Because I think that's what part of the recommendation, right?
It, it is gonna be part of the recommendation that, that Mr. Marquez is looking at, yes.
Instead of doing here, part here, and then part for SEYACA, and so on and so forth.
A- and I will, I will say, just, just for full disclosure to the council, um, our current budget for this fiscal year, uh, for part-time wages is, is indicated on the screen, three hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred. Uh, we have enough, uh, to cover, uh, what we have now even to hire, uh, one more additional part-time staff member working twenty-nine hours a week. Uh, the, simply the budget request was if we wanted to go above and beyond that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but I, I think I, again, I want to take a more holistic approach.
Sure.
Instead of sports staffing, I think for your benefit, so we have a, a bigger picture, instead of a piecemeal approach on this and that, and so on and so forth. Okay, all right, well, that's my, just my idea. Anyway, any, any questions for, uh, Mr. McNerney?
Can we go back to parking lot seventeen, to the previous slide? I, I would like to hear from Young's Tackle. But is there a reason that we don't just have it all two-hour zones, why we have part of it unrestricted and part of it? And then, I don't know if, but you guys said that and I didn't catch it.
No, I don't believe we, we stated it here. Um, so tho- those, um, originally, the, the red squared area, that the city had always owned that lot for a number of years. Uh, the yellow two areas, the city recently acquired those. What would you say, Len? Six months ago? Yeah, about six months ago. Um, so those have been sort of the new, what do we do with it? And, uh, from some of the complaints that have been voiced to me, um, including, uh, the, the tackle shop, um, we have, uh, differing views. Uh, some are wanting no time restriction whatsoever, some are wanting it all to be two-hour parking, some will want some combination of both. So we've been trying to go sort of a- and understand all the viewpoints. And based on what we've seen as far as my staff, when they do, uh, when, when we were actively enforcing, um, the two-hour existing two-hour lot in the red squared area, if we're actively enforcing it, we do get the turnover of traffic, which, uh, which we feel would be sufficient for that area. Now, we may be wrong, uh, but that's from the observation we have, and I will say that the, uh, the post office is, does take up the majority of the spots in that area, both customers and employees of the post office.
That's where I was thinking more. If the other side of the street, four, five, and six parking lots, those are all unrestricted, correct?
You're talking on the west side of, cor- correct, yes. The entire west side of, of Belfar Boulevard, all the state lots have no time restrictions on them.
I, I'm thinking more be, taking a side of this parking str- lot on Belfar Boulevard. When I've tried to go to a business on Belfar Boulevard, parking on the street, and there's never anywhere to park, and no one ever moves, because that's where the employees park and stuff, and that, that's in itself frustrating. But that's where I'm thinking here is gonna be the same. If no one ever has to move from these parking spaces, that's where the post office people are gonna park, instead of going across the street where there's no time restriction and just walking up to work, per se, and allowing that for customers of the businesses. I may be wrong, but I would think just all the way around two hours. Again, I'm, just, that's just my opinion. That's really all I had on all of that.
Okay, doesn't remember sent this?
Thank you. Brian, can you go to, uh, parking lots, uh, five, four, five, and six?
Four, five, and six, you said?
Mm-hmm.
There's a general overview which would show the lots four, five, and six.
Can you zoom in or no?
Uh, it's as far as we can get right there.
Okay, so parking lot five, this is parking lot five right here, right?
Correct.
This is the substation?
Yeah, the substation, correct.
This Pirate Park?
Yes.
Okay, in this section here, we have designated parking spots for, for what departments again?
Uh, we have sheriff-only parking spots. There's eight, eight, eight in total.
Eight in total?
Yeah.
All right. Let me get the hard stuff out of the way first, or the easy stuff out of the way. Parking structure, I agree with. No overnight parking, that's fine. My, my, my whole thing with everything else, though, I'm gonna go back to what I said at the last meeting. I, I think we oughta do all, all of these should all be two hours. And within the parking, each parking lot, there should be designated spots, similar to we have designated spots for the substation, for permit parking that would be designated to businesses. You put them at the furthest points of each parking lot, a number of them, and those are designated to per- permit parking for employees. They got employees, uh, the business owners have to register the bi- the, the parking permit, just like all you did when you went to college. You get a parking permit for, for being a student. You get a parking permit for being an employee. You designate the furthest lots with the most of those, right? And then I would also add a veteran's space in each of these parking lots for veterans to park. You know, they, they deserve a nice, easy parking, closest to the shops. And that would be another one to throw your way, curveball. The reason why I'm saying this is because it's the most consistent way of doing it. You get two-hour parking everywhere, and you have a designated couple of spots in each parking lot for employees that, you know, work in that vicinity. Instead of having to make everyone cross the street and everything else like that. That's just my opinion. That's where I'm going with it. I think a combo approach is the way to go. It's a little bit more work, um, but I think it's the better approach. With that said, I think the, uh, investment on the, on the ALR, and that's a good, good call on your part, twenty thousand dollars for your additional part-timer, that's not a bad, bad idea. But, um, if we wanna see it with holistically and see what else is coming, what other recommendations are coming, I get it. But tha- that's kinda, I don't know if that makes sense, Wendy, what I'm saying, but because right now, we're still gonna be inconsi- we're still gonna be inconsistent. These are two-hour parking. These are gonna be full, you know, all-day parking. And it just, to me, it doesn't make sense that way, but.
All right, any other question? All right, let's, um... Okay, I'd like to hear from the, from the public, anyone would like to testify, uh, give your comments about this item. You've heard the discussions, and, uh, with... You've heard the discussions, and we'd like to hear your input.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Michelle, representing the Belfar Chamber and some of the businesses and myself. I thought I had everything in order, but now after seeing this, I'm more confused than ever. But basically, what I wanna say is, the problem with lot seventeen is the post office employees. What has happened now is you've moved the post office employees from the two-hour parking to the spot where now you've opened up. So keeping that all-day parking is not gonna work. It all has to go to two-hour parking. It needs to be consistent, and it needs to look like you guys know what you are doing. If you have two hour, and then all day, and then two hour, and this and that, it makes no sense at all, it's not gonna solve anything. The post office employees have forty or more spaces for them to park in, but they're too lazy to park there. They're supposed to pull their truck out, pull their car in, and then vice versa when they return from delivering the mail. They're too lazy to do that, so therefore, they just park in the all-day parking, taking up all the customer parking. In the thought process for parking, the customer should be number one, not the business owners, not the city. It should be the customer. The customer is what pays the business owners, the customer is what pays the city revenue. I think that's kinda where Kevin was going. He wanted two hour everywhere. That is the census of all the businesses on that boulevard, two hour. Otherwise, you guys are gonna look like you don't know what you're doing.
Can I ask you a question, Michelle?
Sure.
So what would your thought be on all of these parking lots here, like all of this section?
That should all be two hours.
Right, so all of this is two hours, right?
Right.
Everything to the left, what if we were to designate the back, the farthest two here, the farthest three here, four here, and the farthest three over here, to be employee parking for all of these people here? Only those three, and each one of these lots? What would your, what would your thought be on that?
I don't think that'll work, because when the sports cantina opens, they could easily have eighteen employees. There goes all your parking.
Well, right, and at that point, they go to the city hall, right? They go, come to the city hall parking lot.
Who enforces that?
No, but I'm saying two-hour parking everywhere, everywhere. So you're right, I'm saying two-hour parking everywhere that we enforce.
The whole area?
The whole area, right, the whole area, with the exception of for a couple that get registered by the employees. Right, because you have a couple of ladies, you have ladies here that work in nail, nail salons and stuff like that, who, who are afraid of walking across the street at night when they're done with their shifts and things of that nature. So what I'm saying is, I'd like to propose that we dedicate a couple of parking spots in the farthest points for permit parking that the owners of the businesses register for.
Then it's not two hour, all two-hour parking?
No, no, just, just a couple of stalls.
And who, a couple is in two?
Two, yeah, two.
So who gets those? What business gets those? The chamber?
Registration. I mean, it could be more than that, it's a percentage, you, we can allocate.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, when you have the cantina, the sports cantina opens, there goes the percentage right there, because they're gonna have close to probably twelve to twenty employees. So what, what percentage? What, what's gonna be the percentage? If you have how many fifty spots there, what percentage are you wanting to take?
Well, then they would, it's, it's first come, first served, right? But you have to have a permit for them.
So I, so who's paying for that permit? You're gonna put the burden on the businesses?
No, it doesn't have to be, it just needs to be registered so that they don't get a ticket.
Okay, so...
So that they're not enforced on the two hours.
So the chamber gets two permits?
And then, give me a second, Brian, can you go back to the other, the other? The full-blown, the full-blown thing? Because right now, what we're telling everyone is to go park over here.
Which they should, that's where they should park.
Okay. But not necessarily, if we're trying to make uniformity, we have to think differently, right?
But you're not making it uniformity if you're having...
No, where, this is not uniform.
Two-hour parking and permit parking mixed in together.
Right, Michelle, but this is not uniform. You look at this, this is two hours, no par- uh, two-hour parking, and then this is all time. So this whole area is non-uniform. All of, this is, uh, it's just hodgepodge everywhere. You got red and purple, red and purple, red, purple. So forget red and purple, all over the place in different parking spots, and make them the same for each parking lot. That would be more uniform. Does that make sense?
If it was all two-hour parking with no permits?
And so where do the employees park so that they can do the service for the?
Exactly, that's why you should leave four, five, and six all-day parking.
That doesn't fix any problems.
Having all-day parking in lot seventeen is not gonna do any good until you guys can get the post office.
I'm not saying have all-day parking on seventeen.
I don't think there should be permit parking either, there either. I don't think it's gonna accomplish any, I think it's gonna make more work for public safety. You're saying it's on a first come?
Brian, will the, will the ALRs recognize license plates and exclude them from tickets?
So there is that potential use with the license plate reader cameras system through our, through TurboData that we are maybe looking to go with. They have a per- parking system already, which we utilize, and there would be a potential way to have license plates registered in there and would recognize them as being a permitted vehicle, yes.
Yeah.
But that can be very complicated, though, because if they switch vehicles...
Not only very, yeah, exactly, you're, you're gonna be switching vehicles, you're gonna be switching employees. It's gonna be very complicated, very.
Are you, are you down?
I'm done, I mean, all I'm saying is that this is not uniform either way.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Michelle. Where do you park?
I was just gonna ask the same question.
Because you're right now, your office is on the east side of Belfar Boulevard, right? Okay, where do you park?
Across the street.
Is that a burden to you to walk across the street?
No.
Okay, all right.
And what time do you leave for the day?
Because the customer comes first, that's who pays the wages, that's who pays all of you guys. It's the customer comes first. So I park across the street, I'm not sure where Kevin parks, but I'm sure his customers...
We can ask him, we can ask him.
Across the street, his customers come first.
Okay.
It's the customer, that's what should be considered in all the parking.
Absolutely, okay. Any question of Michelle?
No, I wanted to know where she parked also.
Okay.
But that was, thank you.
Well, right, that's the only designation right now that's allowed.
Okay.
That's why she parks there. That's why everyone parks there right now. But what we're having is other members who are, you know, com- they're not complaining, but they're complaining that they have to park really far to walk, and they're, they're ending their days late at night.
On that street?
Yes.
And I haven't heard any complaint.
Have you talked to Lana at the nail salon?
She's the only one, but they complain anyways about everything, and I don't really know why they're complaining, because they park in the side area in front of their building. They don't even use this parking lot over here. They park in like the alleyway, there's that, there's those four spots there, that it's the alleyway, sorry. There's, it's the alleyway, and then there's four spots, that's where they park, so why are they complaining anyways? You're not gonna make everyone happy, you're not.
No, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm trying to promote here is, exactly, no, this is customer-focused either way.
No, you're focusing on employee.
No, it's a balance. It's a balance. A couple of designated spots in each.
One business, not all businesses on the boulevard. You've got Kevin right here.
All right, sorry, Michelle, I'm done. Question? No, okay, all right, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Uh, before we get the next speaker, Brian, are there any complaints on the west side of Belfar Boulevard in terms of lack of parking?
So I have never received one, and, and since I do, my wor- my office is on that side of the street, I see it on a daily basis. We rarely fill up on that side of the street. Sometimes in the evening hours, if I'm working late, it'll fill up pretty quick from all the downtown, you know, happenings that are going on. But normal Monday through Friday, between eight AM and five PM, there's always parking available.
So on a regular basis, there are no complaints on the west side in terms of availability to parking?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else would like to speak? The gentleman, I think you've been ready? Now it's your turn.
Yeah, we're okay with two-hour parking.
If you can repeat what you said, because now you're gonna be testifying. That was a preview.
We'd like to have it all two-hour parking, and they'll, and then Kevin and them, park across the street, we're okay with that.
So they park across, on the west side?
Yes.
Okay. And how many employees do you have at?
Well, there's sometimes two, sometimes three, sometimes one.
Okay, because I know Kevin has been complaining about lack of parking before.
Yeah, we need all that two-hour parking.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, any question? Oh, did you sign in first?
Yes, I did.
Please sign in, okay, thank you.
Can I ask you one question? Yeah, of course, I have a question. If I may ask real quick, one question?
Sure, one question.
Or two? I, I, I hear you, I agree with you, this should be two-hour parking. The majority of it shouldn't be a, what's it called? No time restriction parking, I agree with that. But can I ask, in, in, in your business, how many of your employees are female, and, if I may ask? And that, that leave?
One female.
That finish at, at eight PM, eight PM, nine PM after, after dark?
No.
Right, what time do yours' business close?
Well, it's closing during the winter earlier at, at six.
Six? So if there's a...
It's at seven during the summer hour.
So you heard my idea of making a, a couple of spots for, for non-restricted or permit parking, whatever that looks like?
Yeah, I just talked to Kevin, he'd like to have it all two-hour parking.
So he needs all forty-eight spots?
I, I, I think at times, there's, there's a lot of us, yes.
I mean, remember, the two-hour parking in the rest of the area is gonna get rid of the...
But we're not the only one, there's four or five businesses right there.
Right.
So... Yeah, it's gonna take quite a few spaces.
Understood, very good, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else? This is a hot item.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Mitch.
Mitch Hack, Parks and Rec Commission. I just wanted to put my two cents into, try to help everybody. On the, on the lot seventeen, I would be in agreement of making all of that two-hour. But then the other question is, who at the post office is supposed to supervise the employees of their parking? I mean, you have to go to, I mean, the post office's been there forever, and I think, pretty sure the, their requisition went through that the city of Belfar owns that land now.
They know.
So you go to the post office, and you, whoever the supervisor is there, get your employees in line of, of where they're supposed to park, period. That's what I have, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mitch. Anyone else? Okay. All right, what's your pleasure?
Miss, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the decision on this item, and to bring it back with a concept B that makes it more uniform across the entire parking district. And with seventeen being, the majority of it being, what's it called, two-hour parking. I'm not ready to make a decision on this one. That's my motion.
I'm okay with it, so I...
Okay, well... I make a alternate motion.
Mister, what are we gonna call you? Mister Chairperson?
Chair Pro Tem.
Chair Pro Tem. Members of the council, just so you know, in order to adopt a resolution, we need three affirmative votes. So if there's one abstention, the resolution would not pass, the same way.
Say it again, say it again.
There have to be three affirmative votes in favor of a resolution for it to be adopted. So it's not a majority, it's, so a two-one vote will not adopt the resolution, a two, a zero vote will not adopt the resolution from the standpoint of one abstention, it has to be three affirmative votes.
So the way, the way I see it right now, we cannot take any action.
I don't know, you made the motion, so we'll see if there's a second and three votes.
Well, there's no second.
I interrupted before you could get one.
There's no, is there a second? There, there's no second. So I make an alternate motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-four sixty, modifying the recommendation on lot seventeen to make it all two-hour parking, and to postpone the decision on the twenty thousand budget amendment.
That's my second.
Okay? Motion by the Presiding Officer Pro Tem. Nice title, huh? To adopt Resolution Twenty-four sixty as amended with two amendments, seconded by Councilmember Morse. Roll call, please.
Mister Mayor, or Mister Chair, whatever we're calling you.
Presiding Officer Pro Tem.
Presiding Officer Pro Tem, sure, let's go with that. To clarify, the motion...
I'm making a fancy title.
The motion is as modified, but for one clarification, the eighty thousand dollars for the additional staff, that part we're postponing for future consideration, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But eighty thousand would go depending on...
I'm sorry, eighty thousand for the technology, you're including...
Technology's gonna go.
But...
We're postponing twenty thousand dollar budget modification on the staff.
Got it, so the technology, eighty thousand is included, the twenty thousand dollars for the staffing is postponed for future consideration.
Because we can have that without additional staff.
And that's what I seconded.
Thank you.
All right. Motion was made, seconded by Councilmember Morse. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
No.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Okay, question to City Attorney. What's the path forward?
The path forward is you can continue trying a motion with further amendments to the resolution, or declare the matter impass and go on to the next item.
So if there's an, if there's an impasse, what happens to the parking situation?
Status quo.
Status quo, okay.
Yeah, so, so just for clarification, Mr. Grecky just pointed out, the, if we go back to lot seventeen, super quick, the first five spots, the very top row, those are currently marked as two-hour parking, so that would, that would...
Which one?
The top five to your left, left to your right.
And who, who, who authorized that?
Uh, that was, staff put that in a number of weeks to months ago, and that was put in to temporarily leave some of the issues until this larger project was brought forward.
So there was no authority to do that? Correct?
I would be inclined to, to agree with you on that, yes.
The Belfar Municipal Code allows the city engineer to designate particular areas within the city for parking and parking restrictions. So there is authorization for this to be done at an administrative level. The question before you, though, is whether the city council wanted to do something different.
Can the city council take action just for those specific parking spaces?
Ratifying or unratify, unapproving?
Or giving different directive?
Yes, you can take that action. Again, it would be a modification of the resolution, and it would be the same process.
Without, without doing any, I think, other thing, other than those two, the yellow, the yellow spaces, very specifically, can the city council take action to give staff direction?
Mister Eminence Pro Tem, yes.
Presiding Officer Pro Tem. You're making it more grandeur. All right, that's the question.
You can, Mister President Pro Tem, you can certainly designate different parts of the public parking for different types of timing. The issue really has to do with signage and direction from the city council, and the absence of direction from the city council, it's a staff-authorized method. This happened several years ago when the council revamped all the parking restrictions.
Okay, so... I'd like to propose that the city council direct staff to bring back a resolution designating those yellow designated areas on lot seventeen to be two-hour parking. And bring back the resolution for the next meeting.
Yeah, you can do that tonight, or we can bring that back.
Or we can do that tonight?
Sure.
Okay. In the form of a motion? We haven't, this is uncharted territory for us.
To be frank, I'm not sure how we've designated those two areas within the resolution, but certainly, the modification to the resolution would be simply to, let's just call them, the top one A and the bottom one B, and the one with red C, so this would be a modification for areas A and B to be two-hour parking, and we'll modify the resolution in accordance to the city council's direction, if that's what you would like to do.
Until we can go back to readdress the whole thing?
My understanding from the President Pro Tem is that he just wants to designate those, those two areas-
Because we're gonna take action on the rest, other than this. We can take action on this, right?
Correct.
But not on the entire resolution.
So the resolution, we would delete everything else except for, uh, areas A and B?
Right.
Pursued to the city council's direction tonight.
So, the modified resolution now is, uh, asking staff to modify the resolution to designate the yellow designated areas to be two-hour parking?
Correct.
Okay.
And we can do that right now, if that's what you would like to do, or we can do it for a future agenda.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by the Presiding Officer Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Morse, uh, to direct staff to modify the Resolution twenty-four sixty to designate the yellow designated areas to be two-hour parking. Only, the rest of the resolution will not be included. Is that clear enough? Clear enough, okay. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
No.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
I'd like to make a third motion and final motion. I'd like to have this item come back to us with a conceptual second option for us to consider a little bit more thought out. I think that tonight's agenda is rushed, and I don't think that we are looking at this as a, at a holistic approach. So, I'd make a motion to bring this back with a conceptual plan for an option two.
The rest of it. Bring everything back.
Now, there's no second? Okay. Motion dies? All right, just for the benefit of the public, the yellow designated areas will be two-hour parking.
Wait.
Correct?
As, as of this moment, what will continue is the status quo. The motions on the floor have not passed.
Because of the lack of, of votes?
Correct.
Again? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for coming to this meeting, um, so, it's the status quo. All right, next item.
Should I get them?
Oh, uh, to recall, um, the mayor and the mayor Pro Tem. All right, let the record reflect that Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem has rejoined, have rejoined the meeting.
All right, so you completed thirteen A, we're moving on to thirteen B, Mister Smoot.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, this is consideration of possible action to adopt a resolution approving a joint powers agreement, agreement file number one zero seven two with the cities of Lakewood and Paramount creating the station city's public safety authority and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement. And then Mister McNerney's gonna take this one too.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of city council, another presentation by myself. Uh, this evening, I'll be seeking your approval, as Mister Smoot just, uh, just discussed, your approval for Resolution number twenty-four sixty-one for the creation of a joint powers agreement with the cities of Lakewood and Paramount creating the station city's public safety authority. Over the past four months, I have been conducting an internal review of public safety operations. Part of this review also consists of an independent assessment made by our law enforcement consultant, Phil Marquez. And for those that don't know Mister Marquez, he is a former sheriff's department captain of Pico Rivera Station, and I have been working with him since, uh, since July of this year. Um, a final report of both of our findings is forthcoming to the city council in January. However, this specific item, the JPA formation, is being fast-tracked as we are working collectively with the cities of Para, Lakewood and Paramount to establish the JPA organization. Uh, the JPA is one of the recommendations for public safety improvements identified by myself and Mister Marquez. In September, the Public Safety Commission was presented with the formation of a JPA and recommended its implementation. So what started this conversation? Uh, over the past year, each of the three cities involved wanted to seek out new and unique ways to provide public safety services, and to take a regional approach to problem-solving, as opposed to a city-by-city approach. Oftentimes, issues which Bellflower faces are the same issues being faced in Lakewood or vice versa, and it makes sense to work collectively to solve problems rather than independently. Some of the identified issues which led the three cities to, to view the formation of a JPA as a viable alternative to the status quo were the inability to grow our sheriff resources, the cost of resources are increasing each year with less services being provided, and law enforcement responsive to, responsiveness to quality-of-life issues is less than desirable, which I think we're all very aware of that. Should the formation of the JPA be approved, uh, this is what the, uh, the boundaries would look like. It would encompass the entire cities of Bellflower, Lakewood, and Paramount. The biggest question is, what would the JPA do? The formation of the JPA will allow each of the three cities to work together, pool resources, and share in the costs of those resources. It will also provide opportunities to seek out resources not already utilized by the member cities due to a number of limiting factors, whether that be cost, personnel, or oversight. Ultimately, the JPA is an excellent opportunity to do something different. And I want to highlight that right there. The chance to do something different. Um, myself and my colleagues have heard this council very well in that doing the regular, everyday things is not the best way forward. And this is the first of many things coming forward, which we hope to show you that we're doing something different to try to get things done in a better, more proactive way. Uh, public safety and law enforcement services are not that unique and not generally susceptible to drastic changes in service delivery. What is being presented today is an opportunity to take an outside-the-box approach to our current delivery of public safety resources. The structure of the JPA would consist of a board of directors and an administrative entity. One member from Bellflower City Council will have a seat on the board of directors, while the city man, city manager or designee would participate in the administrative entity. Depending on the type of services and the cost of those services which the authority or the JPA elects to pursue, additional funding requests will be brought back to the city council for their approval. The authority has the potential to utilize a variety of resources, including some of the following. And I'll go through a list here of what is, what are some of the potential ones that have been discussed between the three cities. Uh, retiree contracted services. Contract with retired deputies or peace officers to provide supplemental law enforcement services, such as gathering data for SAO teams and detective bureaus, following up on calls with, and visits with victims, witnesses, and businesses to generate leads. Uh, and fieldwork could include, could include documenting of criminal activity for further enforcement action. Uh, the authority could also enter into a contract with the sheriff's department to provide very specific supplemental law enforcement services to augment each of the member agency's own contracted deployment of service units. Opportunities for contracted services may include hiring reserve deputies to perform a variety of services, including traffic enforcement, assisting SAO teams to conduct specified field follow-up work, address quality-of-life issues through the issuance of criminal citations or administrative citations, and supplemental field work, uh, field patrol services, such as a booking car to handle the booking of arrestees. Other opportunities could be to hire a crime analyst, law enforcement technician, or similar civilian position to assist member agencies and SAO teams and public safety teams with compiling a variety of crime incident data to generate reports or copies of criminal or other recent, uh, necessary response to address issues. Traffic and road safety programs. Establish a traffic and road safety program focused on improving roadways of member agencies in the authority utilizing various education, engineering, and enforcement measures. Prosecution services. We could request the district attorney's office to allow the authority, um, the authority member cities to prosecute their own criminal cases through shared contracted services. The authority could, uh, can also enter an agreement for, for the community prosecutor program. And for those, uh, not familiar, that's, that's formerly was the Sage Program, which is what we used to use here in Bellflower for many years. I'm sure many of us remember Georgina Ruiz was a hallmark of that program. Um, currently, the cities of Lakewood and Paramount utilize the, the CPP program, the Community Prosecutor Program, and, uh, this could be something that we could enter back into, uh, with the DA's office. Um, emergency management and preparedness services. The, we could develop a regional emergency management and preparedness program for the planning and training of city staff, response partners, and community members. Uh, we could hire an additional, I'm sorry, hire an emergency management consultant that can coordinate efforts among the authority members. Uh, there may also be an increase in grant opportunities as granting agencies prefer regional partnerships in emergency management planning. Uh, homeless and mental health services. Contracted services could include a mental evaluation team comprised of a deputy sheriff and a mental health clinician from LA County Department of Mental Health, a team of homeless outreach workers to handle case management, a strategically selected service providers to, uh, to connect individuals to appropriate services, such as alcohol or drug treatment, mental health counseling, veteran affairs, interim housing and housing navigation, job trading, and job placement. And lastly, sharing of city resources. Uh, through the, through the authority, it could, it would create a framework to easily allow existing city resource to be shared on an as-needed basis with other member cities. So the overall concept is somewhat, uh, straightforward, and that leads me to my recommendation of approving Resolution number twenty-four sixty-one, which is approving a joint powers agreement with the cities of Lakewood and Paramount creating the station city's public safety authority and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, and to authorize the payment of ten thousand dollars as an initial contribution to the JPA, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report, yes sir.
Mister Mayor, if I might, I'm gonna add a couple of things. Number one, um, as we mentioned previously, there's a larger conversation coming for you all with regard to public safety in January that Brian's gonna bring. Some of the items that were part of that discussion necessitated some more expeditious review, this is one of those. So your Public Safety Commission has reviewed this and recommended it to you all. Number two, I would add one to that recommendation, should you choose to make a motion to allow the city manager and the city attorney to make minor amendments to this as necessary, because we're dealing with three different cities, we may need to make some adjustments. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Brian, for the great report. A question, we, put up, uh, two slides in front of the one that's shown here, that one there. Uh, so we, there, what resources? So, it sounds as though we're willing to contract with additional employees to work with the three cities. Does this organization we're trying to set up show, would they be making the payroll to them? Or, how does that go financially, whereby they're actually working for all three of these cities? Where, who renders the check to them?
So if we're talking an actual contracted service?
Yes.
They would physically have a contract with the authority, meaning, meaning the actual JPA itself. And then, uh, contributing funding would be split up among the three member cities. So we, we would pay the, the JPA, the JPA would then pay the, the contractors.
All right, so the JPA, so then we would, in that JPA, we would also be offering all the other benefits that are, that, someone has to decide what benefits are, what, what the pay packages are. Is that something the board of directors have got to discern?
If we're going to hire actual employees of the JPA, then yes, that would be something we'd have to consider, yes. But I think at this point, we're not looking to really hire employees of the JPA versus mostly looking at contracted services.
All right, and so they would simply be paid and they could figure out their own situation? When you consider the three cities that are involved with this, where would that actual, the contractors operate from? Which city would house them?
That's a good question. Um, depending on the level of service and, and what it is, I'm, I'm sure we would have to find out, negotiate that through with the JPA and the three cities to figure out where there's room to house people, if we, if we needed to, yes.
Okay, and so that has not been determined as of yet?
Uh, no, at this point, we have just a framework, and what's being brought today is just a framework of the JPA approval. Um, the finer points and details of what could come from this, obviously, is a further discussion down the road.
So, I assume that each one of the member cities are contributing the same amount of money, ten thousand dollars to initiate this?
You are correct, yes.
Okay. Those are my questions to begin with, and we'll start with Wendy Morse.
I don't have anything right now.
All right, uh, let's start on this end, Mister Santenaz?
Mayor, first thing I want to kind of share this with you is, I got a call today about this very item. So the question was, posted to me was, is Bellflower forming its own police department? So, I just want to, um, respond to the question publicly. We are not forming a police department with Paramount and Lakewood, okay? Because they read about this, and I, I don't blame the person, the caller. Uh, it seems like there is some kind of path forward to that, but at this time, there is no plan to form a police department among these three cities. So I just want to kind of lay it out right, right now, very clearly. Um, my understanding here is, um, Lakewood will be something like the, the fiscal agent?
Uh, that is correct, uh, Lakewood, Lakewood volunteered to take that on with their financial, finance department, yes.
So, to follow up the mayor's question, so if there's any payment, they will basically pay on behalf of the JPA, and then we will reimburse them at some point in time?
Correct.
Pay them in advance, something like that? Okay. In, in terms of, um, contracting also, we will not lose our own identity, so to speak? So we can still contract with the sheriff's department?
Uh, correct, so, C- City of Bellflower, current and future resources will not be impacted by this. We, we'll still be able to contract for our own services, aside from what's being offered here through, through the JPA.
So only things that you mentioned here that can be shared with the other two cities will be contracted by the JPA on behalf of the three cities?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thanks for the clarification. That's all I have, Mister Mayor.
All right, Mister Sanchez?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, to clarify on the intent to contract out, you mean, is it private security, Southwest Patrol? Is it specifically with the LA County Met Team? Um, what, what do you anticipate the JPA contracting out for directly?
Um, any and all of that. Um, it, really, there's nothing off the table at this point. It, it could be anything from contracting with the LA County Sheriff's Department to get a mental health evaluation team, which would be shared among the three cities. It could be getting retirees who are recently retired law enforcement to come aboard as contractor, not as employees, but contractors of the JPA, to do some sort of enforcement or even backend support, uh, supplemental law enforcement support duties. Um, it, there, there has been talk about, you know, u, utilizing a, a separate contract with Southwest Patrol, aside from what we already have with Bellflower, something separate. Um, so really, it's all on the table.
And so clarify, if I'm mistaken here, but the reason for this need or this approach is because there currently is, for lack of a better word, a moratorium on increasing our current contracts?
Correct.
Any contract that we have or that LA Sheriff's has with any city directly, they're not allowing an increase, but-
There's a hiring freeze, yes.
There's a hiring freeze. But, if it's a new contract, there is an obligation?
To our, to-
We'd have to work that through with, uh, the Contract Law Bureau, to be honest. Um, if they would be willing to do that with a JPA or not, we're kind of in uncharted territory here. And part of this is, uh, the three cities are all collectively, uh, facing some of the same challenges and facing some of the same hurdles, some of which you specifically mentioned, our inability to expand our contracts. And we're trying to think outside the box and find new ways we can address some of the public safety concerns that we share among the three cities and that we're all individually facing and say, look, if we're all facing the same issues, can we address them somewhat regionally? And so this, this entity, um, right now, you have the creation and structure of an entity with very little funding to start with, with a vision to the future of, there may be things we can add and subtract from this as we go along, but at least we have an, an entity in place with which to do it.
Okay. So with that said, knowing that we're gonna get a more instinct presentation down the road, I guess, if you were to, after everything that you mentioned, what are the top three things that you think we're gonna get right away from it? The value?
Top three as far as contracted items that we may shoot for?
Right.
Um, in, in our conversation with the two other cities, I know, I think initially right off the bat, they wanted to get, they would like to get contracted retirees in. Um, I know we had talked about, there was a prior program the LAPD used to use, maybe, and they may still use it, where they would, uh, have long-serving, uh, police officers retire and then immediately come back as part-time employees, uh, to not lose that, that history and that value that they had and could still teach. So there was some component that we were gonna research on that and to see if we can get recently retired deputies to come right back and work with the JPA to fulfill, whether it's, you know, looking at search warrants for, for less season of the deputies, whether it's helping them write reports, whether it's, it's filing cases and taking things of that nature. So there was elements of that. So that's a big one that I think would be something that the, the, the authority would want to look into. I think, um, especially on the homeless, homelessness front, um, anything with the mental health evaluation is big. Um, and I, I would hope that we could get something with the sheriff's department for, for the Met Team to get that to come in, because, uh, you may recall that this, the city council here approved funding for a shared mental health car with us in Lakewood, uh, which did not come to fruition because the county was unable to provide that to us. So this is, would be another crack at that and hopefully, uh, share that resource three ways, which would be highly beneficial. Um, and maybe the one, maybe people aren't really thinking too much about is really, I think, emergency services. Um, right now, each of the three cities, we, we take emergency services on as a auxiliary role. Um, it's really shared, like for example, here in Bellflower, it's shared between myself and Mr. Smoot, and we don't take that on full-time. So, um, there's a huge benefit to bringing somebody on in a contracted role, uh, to oversee emergency management or emergency responses for all three cities. Um, so I think that's another key area which doesn't get enough, enough, uh, highlight.
Perfect. On the retired concept of sworn, uh, would these de- retired deputies, if they were to come back, would they be considered sworn deputies?
So they would still carry their, their peace officer statuses, but I, I believe we, for protection of the JP, I think we had worked out, um, that they, we would not openly allow them to, to carry their firearms and put them in situations where they'd be having to utilize that ability.
So ideally?
Councilmember Sanchez, let me add this. Uh, this, this specific topic came up as part of these initial discussions with the two other cities of, would these, uh, folks we might hire and or contract for through this JPA be considered peace officers and have the powers of a peace officer? There are a lot of implications that come with that. We've specifically excluded that for the time being and focused this more towards, uh, some of those ancillary things like Brian mentioned, like, uh, offsetting our existing sheriff's resources so that they can focus on those things. For instance, when there's a, uh, call out to a break-in in someone's home, if it takes a while for someone to, for a sheriff's deputy to come out and take a report or to do the fingerprinting or RCSOs to get out there, these are folks that could come out that have the institutional knowledge of how to address those things and the right questions to ask, and can be doing that so that our sheriff's deputies, which again, we can't expand, can be back out on the street doing what sheriff's deputies do. It supplements our existing resources, but these would not be peace officers, because if we establish them with peace officers' powers, we're effectively having to create an entire department, hire a, uh, chief for that department, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and you can see how that balloons rather quickly.
Right, of course. No, thank you, uh, Mr. Smoot. And so that brings me to my next point, because that's exactly where I was going. I'm trying to create the value in this, right? So it sounds like this positions would be somewhere in the middle between CSOs who cannot do certain work, um, when, for example, there's a, you know, a car break-in or whatnot and, and our residents have to wait for a deputy to show up, um, and they have to wait three, four, five hours, unfortunately, because it's not a priority one call, right? It's not a priority call. These retired deputies would, in other words, be seen with the same respect to be able to go and do that type of reporting, right?
They could, they could engage with those individuals, gather all of that information, and assist a deputy in filing that report, because they've already gathered all the information. So yeah, it's sort of a somewhere in between imposition.
It frees up our, our, our other deputies, our sworn deputies, non-retired, to continue to do the other work that they need to do.
And in the same way, when we're, um, for instance, engaging with, uh, a homeless individual on the street or in the riverbed or on, you know, property somewhere else in the city, it carries some authority and some institution and knowledge to have somebody who has that background of knowing how to deal with that situation appropriately.
Yeah, that, that's.
Still frees up our deputies to be dealing with other things.
Right, so the way I'm seeing it, it's, we're kind of creating a, a tier between CSO and a sworn deputy. That, that could be a value. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you. Mr. Smoot, did this, we started, or started this dialogue with the other cities about six months ago? Is this, this is?
Yeah, something like.
About six months. This is, this has become kind of fast. And this kind of started, um, I'm gonna go back even further. Our previous city manager, Mr. Coopson, myself have met with retired deputies trying to see if they could be useful to fill the need, because we know the sheriff's response is sometimes lack of, um, they don't want to be babysitters to some of the knuckleheads, and this is the struggles that we have. The quality of life that this community sees when they leave their home and go to work, and the quality of life they see when they come to home is not a pleasant sight. And, uh, when pulling, I haven't pulled my hair out trying to figure out what to do. We, we put a million dollars in, in the budget two years ago for more deputies, and we don't have them, because nobody wants to be a deputy or a cop anymore. Um, it's not the glamorous job it used to be, because society says it shouldn't be, I guess. Um, so we don't have the coverage that the sheriff's department is, is because society has made it the way it is. It's not that they don't want to do the job. So we have these gaps. Um, and since then, we've been growing our Southwest Security Patrol to no end to try to fill these needs. But there's still something missing in, in, in one time I was in, in the city manager's office, the current city manager, Ryan, and talking of, what about retired deputies? You know, well, that's an insurance nightmare, is basically what he said. And this pretty much came, it was his idea that kind of, well, maybe we can do a joint, uh, authority, uh, joint powers authority with some surrounding cities. And this is involved in the last six months. And it's came to what it is now, and this $10,000 from each city is just seed money. This is all, no one's done this before. And we're trying to fill a void that we have, and as you've seen, the city manager, I'd, I'd rather have deputies that are armed, but I don't think our joint powers insurance authority would go for that. But he left that box open when he just said that. We don't know where this is gonna go. I see it as the quality of life issues that we see every day in this city as we live here in this community. The sheriff department can still do the job. If we can free them up on some of these other nonsense quality of lives, they can actually go do their job and, and, and get the, the burglaries and the assaulters and the rapists and all this stuff, car thieves or whatever. If you can have some deputies that are trained to go to a business that's having an issue, because if, you know, I own a business and there's times where I need somebody there, guess what? They're not coming. Yeah, your problem's already solved. You solved it the self somehow, and hopefully you solved it in a good way before they get there. And then basically, you tell the story of what happened when they get there. That's just the way life is today. If we had a crew of retired deputies that can come to your site and get there, you would feel some sense of urgency or, or care that this city could do it, and it raised the expectation of quality of life. These are the people that are trained. They're out there. They want to work. They're retired, you know, they're, they're individuals that can want to continue their career, but they're retired and they do it in a, in a lesser, you know, when you don't need to work, you want to work. It's, it's a strange feeling. I'm that way, too. But we have to tiptoe through this with the other cities and, and be able to, we do this legally. And my question was, and I think you answered it, but I'm gonna say it again, but our, we're, for people that don't know, we're self-insured through, we pay a fee to all the cities surrounding, pay it to the joint powers. It's a joint powers, all the cities pay it. We have our own insurance company, basically, that, that guides us. Have they signed off on something like this?
Um.
To a point of unarmed?
Well, this, I mean, this, what you're creating here is an entirely separate governing legal entity, separate from the city, separate from any of the individual cities. So at some point, this agency, if it were to hire employees, would have to go explore its own insurance, which is a conversation we've had at all. Of course, the city manager of Lakewood sits on the city managers', uh, committee for JPI as well. We have representation in, I think it's Sunny, am I correct? For JPI as well. So does it have insurance currently?
Yeah.
No, but it's something that we would have to explore.
Would have to look into as, as we hired.
Correct. Same thing for legal counsel. We'd have to explore how to address legal counsel things.
Has to be figured out, yeah.
So all of this is very much up in the air, but the structure here puts that in place. But at some point, yes.
So back to, I think it was either Councilman Sanchez or Santinez, I think it was, uh, who hi- who hires this? I can't see, I know, and then who, what do they work from, if they work from Lakewood or whatever, but that's the accounting portion, I get that. I think that's something that is to be determined, because I would think each entity or each city would want to hire their, and this is, this spitballing here, would hire your own retired deputies and you would control them and, and pay them through your, your budget, I would guess.
Under this, under this structure, they would be hired or, and or contracted through the JPA itself? As to, you know, where they're assigned to and where their?
The JPI would assign them to a certain city at that point, then, maybe, I guess?
Potentially, sure.
Everybody would want, there's so many hours, I guess, yeah.
But they would be assigned regionally. Keeping in mind, we already have the power to do all of these things individually as our, as a, as the city, and we do, for example, Southwest Patrol. All three of these cities contract with Southwest Patrol in some capacity. Now, we might do things in Bellflower very differently than Lakewood might or Paramount might, and Paramount might do it differently than we do.
Mm-hmm.
That's okay. However, that, we can still control that contract with Southwest Patrol as it is currently. At the same time, the JPA could also contract with Southwest Patrol or any other entity to perform similar services on a regional basis over and above our individual contracts, hypothetically.
Yeah. Got it. And then, uh, and this is, I know we, you, uh, Brian ju- brushed on it, uh, earlier lightly, but we have the, this authority could hire its own DA or, or a few DAs to go after criminals.
Yeah, the, I think that's the Sage program, Brian? Is that what you're referring to?
Uh, well, currently the CPP program, formerly the Sage program.
Yeah. That's, um, it's something Bellflower currently does not contract for, but the other two cities do that assists in, you know, funneling cases through, focusing priority cases for the DA to say, hey, this is a priority case and we think it should be prosecuted and let us hope you get the?
Right, kind of like we used to.
Yeah. Um, but that is something that could be done regionally as well.
Got it. But this is, I think we got to some sort of framework very fast, and I want to commend you on that of, of starting this in, in your contacts with the other city and your meetings you had to try to even get to where you're at now. It's actually more than I thought, and I'm impressed, and I think this can go somewhere and can have some teeth in it. And authorizing the seed money of the $10,000 per city, you know, for the, our share or whatever, I think that's the, the right thing to do, but just like, if you don't do nothing, you're never going to solve a problem. I'd rather try and fail and then try again, and maybe you'll get it one day, but by doing nothing, what we're, what we've been seeing the last five years is not working. And this is something else that I really feel, and I am passionate about, to try something, and it just may work. We've done a lot of other things. Who, we were the first ones to have Southwest Patrol, and guess what? The other cities are using them now. Um, if that's worked. So we just need to keep trying new things and thinking outside the box, and I really commend staff on getting to where they're at today on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, do you guys feel that the sheriff's department will embrace, um, working side-by-side with retirees coming back or, um, in the, in the sense of working side-by-side with them?
Um, I, I'm sure as with anything, there'd be a little bit of a, a rough patch, but in, in most cases, the people that we probably would be employing or bringing on as a contractor for this thing, they, they're gonna know most of them already.
Right.
If we hire within our own recently retired ranks, which would, we would probably would try to prioritize that, but you never know, you could get someone who's a recently retired individual from, you know, West Covina PD, and all of a sudden, they come in here and we have no idea who they are and, and vice versa. But I'm sure there'd always be some of that, because we experienced that even with Southwest Patrol. Uh, the deputies initially were like, who are these guys? They're just glorified security, they're in our way. And now there's very much a teamwork amongst all of them, and they, and they work very well together. So there's always gonna be a learning curve with it.
Any other questions, Wendy?
No.
Okay. Do you anticipate we'll have to buy vehicles for each city?
If, if, I mean, the JPA may have to purchase vehicles to allow individuals to drive around, correct? Yes.
Okay, any other questions that need to be discussed?
Something to the comment about insurance. I think the trigger here will be, once we start buying vehicles, I mean, JPA?
Right.
Once we hire employees, that will be the trigger for the JPA to have its own insurance. And once they, we are, the JP hires someone to carry guns, that's a different league in terms of corporate. So I just want to kind of caution us about it, because it is sitting in JPI, it's, it's very expensive. Okay, let's put it that way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Victor, did you develop something?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I answered my own question. I think we're gonna be nominating someone, uh, because I was ready to nominate Mayor Protem Dutton on this committee, but I think we're nominating next month?
Yeah, are you, we're not ready to make that decision yet. You're not looking for that, are you?
No, that'll come during your, your regular committee assignments, yes.
That's what, that's what I'll answer to myself.
We just want the money.
Right.
Mayor, with that said, I'd like to adopt resolution.
One second, let's see if the public has anything to say. Not? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 24 dash 61, uh, creating the station cities' public safety authority and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, authorizing the city manager to provide the $10,000 as an additional contribution to the GPIA with the minor, the minor, uh, uh, motion, uh, or the minor adjustments that he and the city manager will make as needed through this process.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protemwey, redundant, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Moving on, 13C, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is consideration impossible action to authorize the mayor to execute agreement file number 200.9 in a form approved by the city attorney with Southeast Area Animal Control Authority and approve a budget modification for hiring an additional code enforcement inspector or pursue other contracted animal control services. And again, Mr. McNerney is going to take this one for you.
Mr. Mayor, member of the city council, it's sad to say, this is my last presentation of the evening.
Oh, we're just getting used to you.
I'm sure you're sick of me for being up here.
For the year?
No, for, for this evening, for this evening.
Oh, I wish.
Um, this evening I'm presenting agenda item 13C, as Mr. Smoot alluded to, related to animal control services. On August 12th, uh, the city council was presented with the renewal of our existing animal control contract for SIACA. Uh, council provided direction to research additional providers. During the research, it became apparent, uh, that there were limited organizations which, which offer services to the capacity which Bellflower could utilize. Uh, research also revealed that there is not a variety of different services or how those services are carried out by the different organizations which were contacted. A total of seven organizations were contacted and three of them provided quotes for service. SIACA provided a full service quote totaling $641,880 net cost after the guaranteed animal license fee collection of $138,000. Despite not taking on new clients, the city of Long Beach also provided an estimated quote of $951,580 for animal, for, uh, for full service animal control. Uh, Long Beach is seeking to grow its contracted services as they currently provide animal services to the cities of Cerritos, Signal Hill, and Los Alamitos. Uh, no timeline was provided as to when Long Beach might take on additional cities. But they are actively seeking to grow their operation to include additional contracted organizations. The SPCA LA also provided a quote for the sheltering of animals only as they do not offer any field response. Um, any contract with the SPCA LA would require an additional organization to be sourced to perform field response duties, enforcement action, and investigation of animal complaints. Uh, the remaining organizations who were contacted were unable to accept any new clients at this time. And one organization did not return our inquiries for response. The current delivery of services provided by SIACA is highlighted by their ability to shelter animals, respond appropriately to sick, injured, or loose animals, and the various animal programs which they offer at their, at their headquarters. Uh, specifically their, their spay and neuter programs. Uh, staff has, has received few, if any complaints, uh, regarding these types of services which they perform. The complaints which we have received however, um, I'm sorry, the complaints which we have received however, uh, regarding SIACA stem from a lack of responsiveness in addressing animal violations, specifically those found in the Bellflower municipal code. Uh, for example, barking dog complaints, unpermitted animals, too many animals, dog breeding, and not picking up after your dog are typical quality of life complaints which we receive. SIACA's response is slow and often rela- often lacks any follow-up investigation to these complaints. To address these service complaints regarding animal violation of the Bellflower municipal code, I am proposing to hire an additional full-time code enforcement inspector. Uh, this inspector would be the main point of contact for investigating animal violations while also conducting regular code enforcement duties. An additional inspector position will enable us to, to be more responsive to animal complaints made by the community while also bolstering overall code enforcement efforts as a whole. Uh, this is basically a two birds, one stone opportunity which we have in front of us here. Uh, the cost of an additional inspector is $52,000 a year, I'm sorry, $52,000 if hired after January 1st, 2025, which is half of a fiscal year, um, or $104,000 for an entire fiscal year. Approximately 15% of the inspector's full cost would be offset by the Community Development Block grant federal funding, which would lower the overall net cost to the city. Again, somewhat of a short presentation, but that leads me to my recommendation of authorizing the mayor to execute agreement file number 200.9 with SIACA and a form approved by the city attorney and approve a budget modification to increase the appropriation in account number 010-42100-2230 by 10,880 to 641,880, which would cover the fiscal year, uh, 24, 25 cost of the SIACA contract. And approve a budget modification to increase the appropriation in account number 010-40100-4105 by $52,000 for the hiring of an additional code enforcement inspector to assist in addressing animal violations of the Bellflower municipal code or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. Uh, so with that, that'll conclude my presentation, and again, available for any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Mr. McNerney. That's very informative. I wondered if you could put up, you haven't presented it, but it's in our packet here, having to do with the price of dog licenses, unaltered, altered, and.
So, uh, uh, it's slightly different, uh, the version you've seen in front of you on the screen, but it's basically include, more complete with all of surrounding cities that SIACA takes care of, including Long Beach as well.
Okay.
And, uh, and just for reference, the yellows are the low fees in each category and the red are the highest fees in each category.
And tell us when our fees were last examined.
So the animal licensing fees, uh, specifically for dogs in Bellflower, the last time they were changed uh, was in 2019, it increased by $2 for CPI. And then the previous change to that was 2017, it increased from $35 to $40. And then prior to that, it was in 2012. So there have been minor increases over the, over the last 12 years.
And historically, I, I was looking, the SIACA contract has increased anywhere from 5 to 8% per year?
You are absolutely correct, yes. And I will note, uh, just for clarification, the only dog license fees which have changed for Bellflower during that 12-year time period were only the unaltered dog licensing fees. Uh, the other categories, altered dog, altered dog, uh, for a senior payment and unaltered dog for a senior payment have not changed since 2012.
You don't have up there the keeping vicious animal classification?
I do not. Uh, we, I, I, to my knowledge, I don't believe SIACA collects any of that force, but that fee did change as well, yes.
Well, it is on our chart here, but it's not on the wall, you know? And, and I was gonna have them define what a vicious animal was, that it has remained just a dog or is it an alligator?
Uh, it's, it's the actual technical definition which SIACA actually will define an animal as a vicious animal, yes.
All right. Let's start on this end. Mr. Sunny, Sunny Inez, have you any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. McNerney. This is very, we're in kind of a very sad situation. Every year, we go through this approval process. And I just hate to be in a situation we're in. For lack of a better word, we have no, we have no good choices. Uh, if you can show the chart comparing, um, the service for SIACA, this one here. I was looking at your positive delivery of service. It seems like sheltering animals, responses to sick, injured, and running, or running at large animals, spay and neuter programs. It seems like this is a service provided by SPCA LA. Am I right?
Uh, so yes, except for the response into sick, injured, or running at large animals because the SPCA LA does not have a field response. Uh, SIACA does.
For the most part, the service they're providing is basically SPCA LA.
So SIACA does provide the same services SPCA LA with the addition of the field response?
Right, and then because the air's improvement in terms of enforcement, inspections, assertive actions, these are the complaints we're getting from our residents, and they're not doing it. And at the same time, again, we have no good choices here. And we're paying, we're gonna be paying $779, $780,000 for something that SPCA LA can do for $540.
But they don't have the in.
I know, I understand that, that's where I'm getting at. It seems like there's something that we can look forward in the future is can we, I want to bring up the, um, JPA here. And just think outside the box here, okay? If, for example, let's say we do the sheltering to SPCA LA and do the enforce, the enforcement, all the air's improvement under the JPA, is that a viable option?
Um, of course, I mean, anything's a viable option. Uh, I, I will, uh, one sort of asterisk to this is when I had a fairly lengthy conversation, multiple conversation with the SPCA LA, um, that price which they provided was the low-end price. They, I was amazed to see that they, um, they have a lot of penalties associated with bringing non-traditional animals to their shelter. So they, they consider anything beyond a cat or a dog to be a non-traditional animal.
I see.
And they will charge you a $1,000 late, or not, not, I'm trying, not a late fee, but a penalty fee for any animal brought in, that's not a dog or a cat. And, and we, for example, were talking with them because with code enforcement, we were investigating a, a rooster, uh, location in town. And the individual had 10 roosters. So I gave him a hypothetical, I said, well, if I, we ended up having to take those 10 roosters and get it to custody and drop them off at your location, would that be $10,000 in penalties? And they said, absolutely it would be.
Wow.
So that price could, could balloon quite higher than the 500 some odd thousand that they provided to us.
Couldn't we have the rooster identify as a cat?
All right. But what, what I'm getting at here is, I, I know that at this time, we don't have a, we don't have a choice. I mean, we need the service to be continued. So it seems like, uh, we're gonna go along with SIACA's proposal. But at the same time, I'd like staff to work in, to look into this. Because we need to kind of plant the seeds into the future because we cannot continue, uh, contracting with SIACA year after year. We need to do something different. That's all I'm saying at this point.
You say that every year.
Well, but I didn't realize, no, there was no JPA before.
No, and that may be a possibility.
But what I'm getting at here, because if JPA, there's always economies in scale. Always. If three cities band together, it's a lot cheaper than each individual city, uh, doing their own service. That's what I'm getting at. But if you don't want it, that's fine.
No, and.
I'm getting at.
And what I'm hearing from the discussions that Brian had with SIACA, it was like, take it or leave it. They're not in anywhere, they're not insulted if we were to go somewhere else.
We have no choice.
Right.
We have no choice.
Yeah, we do.
We do? Don't do it.
You got a big backyard, Sonny.
And the other thing, uh, I just want to point out is, uh, I'm all for enforcement, um, but part of your recommendation is the, the code enforcement inspector. What I'm thinking here is, since you're gonna be presenting a, the report from Phil Marquez in January, I'd like to hold up on this until we get a more comprehensive evaluation of the staffing for public safety, uh, code enforcement, CSO, and things like that. So if the council agrees, I'd like to postpone that recommendation.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the general, the individual who pulled this item last time. For the same reason that, uh, Mayor Protem kind of mentioned, right? We've always approved it every year after year after year. Uh, you know, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Inez, Santinez hit something kind of, uh, kind of a good point. I learned from, uh, our city manager that the SIACA, um, personnel who has to come out and do the inspections or do certain things like that has to be some kind of a sworn, I mean, deputy or something to that degree. There's a special classification. And so there's some challenges there. But with that said, I think the JPA is a good place to have it. So I'm of the mindset, we postpone this motion to approve and, and dedicate our energy in figuring out a solution with the JPA. See if the other cities are interested in, in doing a three-way, um, kind of a program with, with them and lowering their costs, because if they're, uh, Lakewood is also with, uh, Long Beach, right?
Uh, no, so the other two cities, the JPA, Paramount, and Lakewood are both with SIACA.
Oh, and they're members? Are they?
Uh, no, Lakewood's not, uh, Paramount is.
And they get a better fee.
Uh, Paramount does, as a member, yes.
Well, then maybe it's just, it's, uh, I think there's a conversation to be had, at least. I don't, I don't, I don't think we approve of this. I mean, it's $780,000 that down the drain.
Councilmember Sanchez, if I might, if, if that's the direction the council wants to go, my suggestion would be, direct us to go have that conversation with the JPA that we've now are, will be establishing. Approve this in the interim though, because you have, you, keep in mind, you're talking about the fiscal year from July of this year through June 30th, next year. So we have an existing service period with SIACA and we're talking about the next six months. Even if we wanted to do this with the JPA, there's no way we could set that up within six months. It just simply wouldn't happen. But we can have that conversation with the JPA, certainly.
What are you thinking, Ray?
Follow-up question. No, follow-up question.
Wait for it.
So what happens if we don't approve this, legally speaking, contractually?
Uh, contractually, you wouldn't have animal control services.
There you go.
So, for the period.
Well, let's.
Yeah. Okay. Dan, can I go?
Can I go?
No. Yes, you can, Ray. Go on, please. You want a dog, you should talk.
Sonny just said it. So what is, what is it if we just don't have, well, lack of better terms, a dog catcher for a little while? What can happen to us?
Well, first of all, I would offer this. Part of what SIACA provides and any other animal control agency, and frankly, I wish they were here to sing for their own supper. But, uh, we're not talking about just a dog catcher. These are actual law enforcement officials. And they, they come out not just to, you know, slap somebody on the wrist because their dog is barking too much. They deal with things like animal abuse where they're filing criminal charges against someone or at least setting up the case to be filed for criminal charges. These are actual law enforcement activities with a lot more structure behind it than sometimes it appears. So there are, there is a large setup time and cost and process associated with that. And you're setting up something larger than just the dog catcher.
But if we went without one for six months, it's not gonna kill us. Not gonna put us out of business.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, yeah. Are we, are we gonna be involved in litigation of anything?
Are we required by law?
We're exposed, but anyway, I just can't, 700 and.
Well, we get a little bit back from the licenses.
Yeah, 600, $642,000 worth of crappiest service ever. I mean. Well, that's, well, that's after we take our cut from our licenses, yeah, 780. But I'm with Sonny, he mentioned it earlier. $540,000 for service, and I get your $1,000 a thing. How many, do we have any, we don't know how many even animals we had last year that qualified and under that. Is it 50? $50,000 is not a lot of money when we're talking 900.
So we have numbers from SIACA where they classified as, uh, animals that are picked up as an other category, which would probably fit that. I'd have to crunch the numbers.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't know how many those are. But say, there can't be 50 at $1,000 a pop, that's $50,000 on 540, that's 600. I think we get our own dog catcher, buy him a truck, and we just do it in-house. I mean, I'm serious. We, we used to do it that way. You know?
I would offer these folks or something more than a person in a truck picking up a dog. These are actual law enforcement.
Well, when I was a young kid, that's what they were called.
And all of the powers and duties and responsibilities and liabilities that come along with being a law enforcement officer. But to your point, it's certainly something the JPA could consider.
Hey, TV world knows what I'm talking about.
Being that SIACA is in effect, a JPA.
Yeah.
And you have an, an original set of member agencies to that JPA. There's nothing that says you couldn't establish whether the JPA.
We can do our own thing and then exist.
Existing or not. You could expand it and set up.
Maybe, maybe Paramount wants to leave. You know, I hear a lot of other members are not happy.
Yeah.
That could be the case.
Maybe we need to go into business. You know?
Well, I, I don't think it's a simple process.
It's about time we make money on other cities that have more than us.
A question to the city attorney, are we required to offer this service? And if we don't, are we under a liability clause that could cause us a problem?
It's funny that you would ask that question. The city manager and I were just whispering back and forth between ourselves. Off the top of my head, uh, without looking at anything, off the top of my head, I don't think actually the city is required to provide animal services. It's like a county function that the city provides for. Much like the sheriff's services, we're not required to provide law enforcement. That's a sheriff's function. Now, we contract, for example, the sheriff's department for additional deputies to provide law enforcement services within the city's jurisdiction. But off the top of my head, again, I, I, I don't recall that the city is required to do it. We do adopt by, by reference the LA County Code uh, functions for animal, uh, regulations. But we don't have separate service or separate requirements within the city's jurisdiction. Some jurisdictions do that. Uh, again, I'm, I'm speaking off the top of my head. I would have to look into it further to give you a definitive answer.
Okay. I'm sensitive to what we're all talking about, how we feel abused by this organization. But I'm also cognizant that there are so many individuals in our city and it, more and more, that their animals are their children. I mean, we're talking not about just animals here. We're talking about people that have brought those animals in, in their home and in their heart, and, and, uh, I don't want to abandon them for the next six months. That's my concern. That doesn't fly well on any level of governance. Uh, we owe something to those that have animals, and I'm not sure if one of those animals were to pass away, does SIACA provide the service where they would remove the remains of that animal? Or has that not been appropriate to be asked?
Uh, no, I, I believe if, uh, hearing from, anecdotally from other cities and whatnot, and from my own experience, the SIACA will arrive to your location to pick up your deceased animal, and there is a, a charge for that.
So that alone, you know, if somebody's pet passes away and they need to remove the, other than burying it in the backyard, that's their only option of.
No.
No?
As, as a dog owner that's passed away, you can take him to any vet and, and it's a lot faster because you'd be waiting a day and a half to have, have the SIACA come to your house.
I've never had a dog, so I'm just.
You go to the vet and you pay 80 bucks and then it's done. And they'll even give you a nice little funeral. They'll give you a little plaster paw print. It's pretty cool.
Okay, well, I, you're, so I want to make sure that if we decide to abandon this contract and look for another one, if there's an interim, that we don't upset those that have animals in the city that feel as though we've abandoned them. That's my concern.
Yeah.
Anything to say? Yes?
Just on that vein, um, how will this play out if, let's say, a resident, um, calls SIACA for a animal to be spayed or neutered, or get a permit? And they say, well, we don't have a contract with Bellflower.
Would they be turned away?
I would imagine, yes, they would.
They would?
I would imagine so. I'm, I don't know the answer, but I would imagine if we don't have a contract for them to provide services within our community, I don't think they would provide those services.
So who can they get the permit? Especially the permit?
You go to a vet and they'll neuter and spay your animal. That's how I do it.
How about the permit though?
The license.
Yeah, who is?
The license.
Who's gonna do the licensing?
The license, yeah, the license.
And the license supposed to pay for the SIACA program that doesn't work very well.
And we refund 50, we get half of that, you said?
Uh, so they guarantee, um, every contract year that they will get at least a minimum of $138,000, which they give us the full, uh, 100% of. Anything over that amount, we split 50/50.
So that's a concern of mine in terms of the response that SIACA would give a resident for not being able to give a license.
Yeah, where do you go to get a license for your animal if you live in Bellflower?
Yeah.
You go to SIACA.
Well, you just wouldn't have a license. We don't want to enforce a license.
Well, I don't think we want to.
SIACA would probably license a dog, but we don't get any of the money.
I mean.
That's what I would think.
We're the ones enforcing the license, in a way.
A lot of questions, huh?
I mean, it's a lot of questions, but, but, I mean, let's just.
But I, I would like to play the devil's advocate and I am not pro-Siaka. I don't want to say I am because Siaka doesn't come for anything. But a part of getting your dog licensed, because I am a dog owner, is you have to make sure your dog has shots. There's, there, there's yearly things that if, you know, you're not paying attention, you may not have that rabies shot, now your dog bites somebody. There, there are some other trickling effects that could happen by not having someone in place until we have another entity in place. So I'm, I just, because Siaka does stand, they do send out those notices. Our, is to renew your tags, you have to have your dog now needs his.
So.
Polio vaccine or whatever.
Mr. Smoot, how do we pay currently this contract monthly?
No, you actually, um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but I think we get two invoices a year. Um, basically one at the beginning and one in the middle to pay for the, to pay for the services throughout the year. We simply haven't paid the invoice. We've received the first half of a year and we're getting what is in effect final notices on that invoice.
Well, we might be out of the club already.
We can afford the, we can afford a dog catcher truck now.
Well, I, I don't think it'd be prudent just to abandon this with, and leave our citizens without. You know, there's a lot of moving parts on this. Can we abandon this contract with thirty days' notice or once we sign it, it's a year no matter what?
Um, I have the contract here, let's look to look at the termination.
How long do we have to cancel it if we decide to?
Says either Siaka or city may terminate this agreement by giving the other party ninety days, uh, prior written notice.
Okay.
Ninety days takes us to almost a fiscal year.
Well, then we maybe make our move, you know? So what do you, I, I hear all of you and, and it's all valid, but can I get you to admit in some way or that it's not prudent to abandon the contract at this time until we figure out something to replace it?
Well, it's not at this time unless we have a viable option in place.
I think we ought to give ninety days, ninety days' notice now and see what happens.
Well, if the service was bad before, what do you think it's going to be now? What do you do when your employee tells you, I'm going to quit in ninety days?
Hire somebody else.
Right, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd rather give the staff the opportunity to look into this and come back to us. If there's a, if there's a viable path forward, then we can give them ninety day notice at that point. Because until then, I'm not, I'm kind of, as you have heard me earlier, uh, we are in a bad situation. There's nothing good out of Siaka, all these complaints, but we don't have a good option, good viable option.
You know, and if Siaka had shown any interest in this and had come to the meeting and said to us, I know it's a lot of money, but I'm telling you what I'm going to do. I'm going to make sure that you get service above and beyond what we've ever provided. That would go a long way to help me. But they're not doing that. No.
I tell you what, if, if we don't end up going with them, we figure out something else, every city around here is going to be looking at us.
Yeah.
And they're going to just watch this close to see how it works. It's just up here in so many years, it's, well, that's always the way that we've done it.
I understand.
That's what we do. It's like, well, that's always the way. But when the service gets so bad, you start noticing it. And we, you see every one of us have a problem with this. And we started this in August twelfth of, of, in the summer to renegotiate this and this is, and we're still not there. I think we're more upset now than we were in August.
Well, Sonny started it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, question, uh, Ryan? How soon can you get a, um, preliminary study about this in terms of coming up with a viable solution?
Well, um, I, I think fairly quickly we can have the conversation with the JPA cities. That's relatively simple. Where that conversation goes, I can't guarantee. Uh, the other alternative that you have is we can advocate to the city of Long Beach that they should expedite their process of expanding their contract abilities and we can explore that option as well. Those are the two viable options, Long Beach probably being the most viable at this point.
I wouldn't discount the SPCA-LA and, and JPA combination.
Yeah, sure. So back to the JPIA is, what we got started here is very, very in the.
Very vague.
Very early infinite stage. Do we want to muck it up with this? I mean, do we want to throw this on their plate? I mean, as a city manager, now you're going to be talking about two subjects.
Correct.
And we need to get the, yeah, I don't know. I don't think, I don't think we should do that. I think we ought to.
Well, what are the other options though?
Well, and Brian, would you put back up on the board the chart that showed the pricing from Long Beach?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
What I would, there's a third option, which would be the SPCA-LA and like, uh.
And a dog catcher truck.
And a dog catcher truck like Mr. Dutton mentioned.
All right.
We'd have to see the feasibility on that.
Right, but I think back to what Mr. Smoot said, you just don't hire anybody to be on that truck. They've got to have some legal responsibilities if they, I mean, this is just not hiring anybody from Public Works to do this.
That's correct.
Right. Now, you talked about Long Beach. And they're nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. What makes you think that that's the answer even if they take us?
No, that's not, that's not that, that's the wrong one. The, the five forty. Oh, you mean, oh, for the city.
No, we talked about.
Yeah, but what if you get good service for nine fifty-one and you get bad service for seven eighty?
Well.
I'd like the good service. At least you know you're getting paid for something.
Well, you got a point there, but you can see it's not a mo, it's not going to save us any money. Because they're already hired to speak of. And in order to fund that, you can see what the pricing was on, uh, dog licenses.
Well, at the nine fifty, we're definitely, if we're going to be paying that, we can do it ourselves and with the SPCA-LA.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, I'm not sure whether or not to go to Long Beach and say, hey, you got a place for us is a viable possibility.
Why don't we ask staff if they got enough information to come back with something? Mayor?
Yeah, see, a priceless pet will answer the phone, you know? Can we, you need a, a motion to table this or what do we do?
I would say this, if we take no action on this item very quickly, we're going to hear from Siaka. Because we're already receiving notices from them that we have not paid our invoices.
Well, Senator Dutton, he's the one that doesn't pay.
So very quickly, we're going to hear from them and this thing is going to come to a head.
Okay, so our contract is up right now, right?
Well, our contract was up in July.
In July. And then we, every six months, they just want to get paid for, and then we would, obviously, where we just write them a check for what we owe them and see what happens. You know, if they give us, they give us the invoices?
They do send us invoices twice.
For twice a year, obviously, we owe them for six months, no matter how we look at it, right?
Right, we owe them that money. Go ahead and pay what they're asking for.
We got services, we just got to pay them with the invoices.
No, you got to pay for the work they've done.
Yeah, we got to pay them for the work we've done. We're not cheating anybody. It's still, we don't mind paying for bad service for six months.
Well, I think it's non-existent service is what it is.
I would say, I would offer this. At this point, technically, as the council hasn't approved a contract for this fiscal year, I have no contract under which to pay that agreement.
Well.
Okay. Can we authorize a half a contract?
Your city attorney tells me the council can authorize a payment of that amount in the absence of a contract if you desire to do so.
On the dais tonight?
We owe for the service.
You have no contract. If they invoiced us, right, we have an invoice?
We, we do have an invoice from them.
We're paying, we, we owe from July to December already. Right, we're six months behind.
Five months, four months, five months, close to five months.
Pay the invoice with a ninety day notice to terminate.
Well, what if we don't come up with an alternative? You want to be out in the cold?
Well, we'll draw it.
Well, yeah, that's easy for you to say. That's the only option we have until we figure out something else.
I, I don't think we can come up with a good solution within, let's say, ninety days.
I would think so, yeah.
Ninety days? To be implemented?
So, not implement, now that we're going to do our own.
That's what I'm getting at.
Take six months to order the truck.
I think it's better just, I think my recommendation here is just sign the contract for the rest of the year. In the meantime, have stop, figure it out and implement this by July first of next year.
And we have ninety days to get out of it.
And July first next year, we have a new, we have a new arrangement.
Right, but we're not going to put something together as quickly as you think.
No, 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 no way.
We still need to give ourselves direction of which way we're going.
Well, at this point.
Is it in-house or is it a hybrid or Siaka? There's three, three choices, in-house, hybrid or Siaka.
That's why I'm asking staff to come back to us.
Yeah.
And there's plenty of time between now and, and June 30th to do a study and then do the implementation, because we have basically seven months.
All right, so should we have a motion discussing?
We can go without for six months, maybe.
Oh, Lord.
Remember, we talked about that too.
Yeah.
You know, that's like saving three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Good savings.
I understand, but I don't know if that's going to go well.
Everyone I told that we fired Siaka, they were clapping.
I know.
But we don't have a backup, I mean.
Actually, the county is responsible.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
I heard the county is responsible, you don't have to have one.
So we tell our city residents, go ahead and take them to the county pound? That's where they're being dealt with, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But when you're sending out bills to, so now you're, you, you have to license your dog and you should license your dog, you should get, so now we don't renew this contract. And there's tomorrow, the bill that's due for the dog that's in the house next door, do they say, oh, I'm not paying my dog bill now? They, they fired Siaka last night. I'm not paying my licensing fees.
Right, what am I paying for?
What am I paying for, there's no services.
And they come out in January first or January 31st, they got to be paid by.
I think their only way out of this is what Sonny suggested. We sign up for the contract, we know we can cancel in ninety days. We have staff investigate the possibilities of getting out of this situation. But we can't leave the residents without service for that long time.
Okay, so hear me out, Mr. Mayor. What about a ninety day study session and then a ninety day implementation? So by July first, when we start our new fiscal year, we have our new program. We've had ninety days to implement that new program that's going to take place July first.
I, honestly, even in that timeframe, there is no feasible way I could establish the law enforcement agency that would be necessary to provide those services within a hundred and eighty days. It's just not possible. I mean, it's not possible for us to establish that. This is not somebody that's going out to just pick up a dog in a truck. This is a law enforcement official for which we'd have to set up a law enforcement agency, hire a chief of that agency, get insurance through JPI or some others for that agency. It's simply not feasible to do that with a hundred and eighty days. The example I'll give you is as part of the negotiations with the sheriff's department, we had this exact conversation. If a city were to pull out, we had a hundred and eighty days in that, in that period. Or if the sheriff's department were to, were to terminate services for a particular city, we had a hundred and eighty days within which to establish another way to provide those services. And we negotiated a longer time period into that because all of us sat down and said, this simply isn't feasible to do this. This would be no different. A smaller scale perhaps, perhaps it's not, you know, obviously the law enforcement agency that is the sheriff's department, but you're still establishing a law enforcement agency. There's more to it than what we're simply talking about here tonight.
Can you look into the county doing that part, the investigations and those? So we don't have to sta, start that up or anything like that? At the end of the day, just, I think you need time to come back with a viable solution, but I don't think.
The investigation you're talking about is what Brian has gone and done with all of these other agencies.
Right.
Brian, did we contact the county for these services as well? Cause I know they have, they do provide it in cities. I don't know if they'd provide it.
We did and I had a lengthy conversation with the county. At first, they, uh, I expressed to them full service contract to do everything. Uh, they expressed that they are again unwilling to take on, I'm sorry, unable, unable to take on new customers at this point. And then I asked them, well, could they do a half service of just doing sheltering? And they once again responded that they would like to, but they don't have the capacity to take on us, a large city of this size.
But to clarify here, correct me if I'm wrong, if the county's responsible, the county's already taking property tax for that service, am I wrong?
No.
I don't think there's a line I'm writing tax.
No, no, it's in the included, but it's included in that one percent.
This is a con, this is a contract service that the county provides. I can say that in my previous agency, we did contract with the county of Los Angeles to provide this service. And we had very similar conversations to this among the city managers of the various cities that contracted with them of how the heck do we get away from this contract because it's simply too expensive and it was increasing over time? For example, in that city, we were paying something close to what we're paying here. In fact, in the six hundred thousand-ish range for a city one-third the size of Bellflower. So the services are an expensive service to provide regardless of how we do it. Are there ways that we can save money and are there conversations to be had about providing this through the JPA we're establishing or some other JPA? Most certainly, uh, but in one way or another, we're going to have to pay for the services.
Back to your, when you were describing the police powers that the animal control officers have. And, and we didn't have enough time to get that framework in place. The city of Bellflower used to do that and we used to have animal control officers. So we must have some framework still somewhere to use. I mean, in, in records of what to do.
I, I don't know what we used to provide or what the.
Cause we had, we had two people, we had two employees and a vehicle. And they're the ones that, and they're the ones that knocked on every door during the license to get everybody, dog license. And to go find people that didn't renew their license and, and did that. And, and it worked well, they were, they were in the community every day. You see the truck every day when it was here.
There are some services that we can provide, which is why Brian's proposing some sort of hybrid solution to address the quality of life concerns that we've all heard from residents and Brian gets it regularly. Those, those day-to-day concerns that we get complaints about, our code enforcement um, can address some of those, at least from a municipal code perspective through those. The larger scale law enforcement side of it, we don't have the capacity to do that. We do not have law enforcement.
No, I get that, it's, but we did it before and you said we don't have the time to, to get that in place of what the guidelines is for a animal control officer. But we had an, we did, we had two animal control officers before.
The rules might have changed over the last twenty years.
I don't know what the regulations were.
Well, maybe we, okay, why don't we just make a motion to lay this down for two weeks and let staff figure, you know, come back with some more answers? I don't want to make a decision tonight. This is my gut feeling on what way to go.
All right, so then.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just going back to my question, how long will it take you to come back with a study about alternative to Siaka? Whether it's forming our own dog, dog catching unit, whatever you call it, um, as an alternative to these services?
You couldn't do it in two weeks, that's be real.
No, 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 no.
Realistically, no, I couldn't do it that quickly, certainly. Um, we could, I mean, sometime early next year, I would commit, we could bring you back a study.
Maybe the second meeting of January?
But even then.
At the end of January, maybe, yeah.
Maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe?
I mean, we're, this is more in-depth than I think we're recognizing.
Well, that's why I'm asking you the question.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to take more time than that realistically.
Okay, and that's what I'm getting at. You know, I don't want to be irresponsible in terms of not fulfilling our obligation. Because we have some, some obligation here to provide a service to our residents.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, and based on what you have said, even if it's the best case scenario,[1674.52] Okay, and based on what you have said, even if it's the best case scenario, you come up with a good study by the end of January, it's going to take so many, a few months to implement this. So by then, our contract would have been ended already by June thirty. So what I'm getting at, I mean, let's, I know it's very hard to swallow. It's very hard to swallow.
It is.
But I want to be responsible in terms of our obligation. Again, because we don't have, we have, we don't have a good alternative at this point. So I'd like to propose that we approve the contract.
As a motion?
As a motion, um, begrudgingly, I'm recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to execute agreement file number two hundred dash nine with Siaka, as described here, and direct staff to come up with an alternative, um, solution to Siaka by the end of January, and not take action on number two, as recommended, because I want to be part of the whole, of more holistic discussion on, on staffing.
Would you approve the city manager paying the outstanding invoice?
Yes, once we approve the contract, then we have, we have to pay. We have to pay. So that's my motion.
Is there any support for Sonny's motion?
I'll second it.
Is it begrudgingly?
It is begrudge, begrudgingly, but we need to move forward. We can't leave with nothing out there.
Right. All right, so we have a motion by Sonny Sanñones, supported by council member Wendy Morris. Please poll the council.
Should I make a substitute motion?
This is a fun night.
I haven't done one in a while.
Are you going to do anything? Are you going to poll the council?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking how to word it. I'd like to make a substitute motion to not renew Siaka's contract, and keep it simple.
I'll second that.
Oh, good.
Interesting.
So, need a little help here, I've never been through it.
The substitute goes first.
Does substitute go first?
Goes first.
All right, so we have a substitute motion offered by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by council member Sonny Sanñones.
No.
Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santénez?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Morse?
No.
Mayor Coops?
No.
All right, now we can go again, try again for another motion.
Yeah, the other, yeah, the first one's on the floor.
Now you vote on the first motion.
All right, so, uh, now poll the council on the first motion that was offered by council member Wendy Morris and-
No.
No?
Santénez.
Santénez, and the second support was by Wendy Morris. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
No.
Councilmember Santénez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
No.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Long time since I had a three-two guys.
Well, it shows our passion. So, Ryan, you get what we're doing here? Begrudgingly?
Beg, begrudgingly.
I happily receive the direction.
I understand. All right, we made it to the consent calendar. Does anybody have any item they want to pull, or they want to recuse themselves from?
I think everybody's golden on this one.
Yeah. All right, uh, does anybody like to make a motion on this? Since we have no recusals and we know-
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
All right.
Substitute?
No, here we go again. Keep your substitute in your pocket. Council member Sonny Sanñones made the motion to approve the consent calendar, supported by council member Wendy Morris. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santénez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Well, we all agreed on that. Council reports. Wendy, I'll give you the floor first. Do you have anything you want to talk about?
No.
All right. And, uh, let's start over here with, uh, Sonny Sanñones.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request that tonight's meeting be adjourned in memory of Sergeant Joel Jeffrey, finally known as J.J. Pamplona. Uh, Joel Jeffrey Pamplona, um, finally known as J.J., was born in Artesia on August twenty, twenty-one, nineteen ninety-five, and passed away on November eleventh at the age of twenty-nine. Uh, J.J. attended Washington Elementary School, Bellflower High School, Magnolia High School, and California State University in Fullerton, where he earned his bachelor's degree, science degree in kinesiology. He was an active kid and was into athletics and martial arts. While in college, he broke the state squatting record for his weight class during a powerlifting competition. Uh, J.J. joined the army in twenty twenty-one and completed his basic training at Fort Sale, Oklahoma, before heading to Joint Base San, San Antonio, Fort Sam, Houston, and Texas for job training. Following his completion of phase two in physical therapy, training in Tripler Army Medical Center in Hawaii, he was assigned to his first duty station in Madigan Army Medical Center in Joint Base Louis McCord, Washington, in Washington in twenty twenty-two. Uh, J.J. rose to the rank of sergeant as physical therapist specialist. Um, sadly, he drowned while visiting Oahu's North Shore with friends and died a hero by saving another army soldier from drowning. I've known J.J. since, um, childhood. Uh, he lives in my neighborhood, um, and I was just very impressed, um, the way he grew up. He was very kind, very polite, and very caring person, and, and it showed, uh, on his dad that he, he died while serving another army officer. Uh, Sergeant Pamplona was vibrant, kind-hearted, and highly respected. He survived by his parents, uh, Joan Pamplona and Oliver Fortuna, brother Ben, uh, grandparents Guy and Ollie Pamplona, and many cousins, uncles, and aunts. Uh, his service will be on December fifth at, um, Cypress Forest Lawn. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Pamplona and Fortuna families. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to request the council meeting be adjourned in his memory.
And his name was J.J. Pamplona?
J.J. Pamplona.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanchez, anything you'd like to bring up?
Uh, no, no comments tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, our, our second motion, uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton.
I would just like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving that's coming up around the corner, and be safe and enjoy what that holiday is about. Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody, it's a big deal for this parade to go down Woodruff on Sunday. So be out there twelve-thirty, one o'clock. It won't take long, but it will take sometime to five hundred and fifty instrumentalists to go by and play their practice parade, and they'll end up at Mayfair Park. But, uh, be kind to the, uh, traffic officers, they're going to divert you away from that street for a while, but it's, uh, it's something that's very, very special to the city and to the city of Lakewood, and to all the surrounding cities, because there's going to be many parents that'll come out to watch their students march in this band, which is a tremendous honor. The Tournament of Roses president